Article 1 is now before you, consent panel, that is the fabulous revolving funds. Article 2 is the timber rights revolving funds. Article 3 is the custodial of special details revolving funds. Article 4 is the green thumb revolving funds. Article 5, as I mentioned before, is the library revolving funds. And Article 6 is the council on agents revolving funds. You aren't right, I'm only trying. Not hearing any, do you want any votes on that? I'll be pleased if you're ready to vote. All in favor of Article 1 through 6, please be consented by shaking aye.
Aye!
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Article 7 then. Who's going to move articles? Article 7 is the special reports. Mr. Burton.
I move that the town vote here and/or accept whether with reports from town offices and committees.
Any discussion about the special reports? Second, there's special reports, any discussion of that? All those in favor have accepted the reports, committee. Please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. If I'm late, maybe that's just a matter.
I move the town vote to appropriate free cash to sum of $570 to pay prior year's debt.
There is second. Selectman, what's your recommendation?
Recommend approval?
Bincom?
Recommend approval, six calls in favor, none of them.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews, tell us about this article, please.
Mrs. Bydell will figure that out.
Oh, delegate.
Thank you. Before I start with this article, there was a fluorescent green handout in the lobby. And if you are interested in following along with all of the funded articles, this sheet is long. We'll show you how we are going to pay for each of those articles. So with regard to Article 8, we have one outstanding bill from a prior year. It is in the amount of $570, and it is a medical bill for a police officer. The town has an insurance policy, especially for our public safety officials, police officers, and firefighters, that covers 100% of medical claims up to a certain amount. And once we go over that, then the town is responsible for 100% of that. So in this particular case, we do have a small bill. It is from a prior year. Sometimes it takes a while before these bills can be included in insurance companies. And that's why it wasn't taken care of in the fiscal year. Wasn't cared for.
Anyone who wish to have any comments or questions about this article? I'll see if the microphone helps, please, if you're ready to vote. This requires a fourth best majority to do the pay of prior expense. All those in favor of this article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Article 9, Mr. Toll.
I move the town vote to transfer free cash to sum of $153,993. Transfer from Article 12 of the May 5, 2007 annual town meeting, to sum of $2,439. To transfer from Article 11 of the May 9, 1998 annual town meeting, to sum of $1,500. And to transfer from fiscal year 2014 budget, from line 3, interest temporary loans, to sum of $16,400. And from line 4, liability insurance, to sum of $21,147. And from line 5, workers compensation, to sum of $9,255. And to transfer from line 6, health insurance, to sum of $80,000. And from line 7, life insurance, to sum of $7,000. And from line 11, historical commission, to sum of $850. And from line 13, reserve fund, to sum of $50,000. And from line 13A, salary reserve fund, to sum of $6,503. And from line 14, unemployment expense, to sum of $4,332. And from line 72, recycling, to sum of $9,641. And to line 32, legal expenses, to sum of $10,000. And to line 42, police lockup, to sum of $8,000. And to line 43, injury leave, to sum of $13,407. And to line 46, fire department, to sum of $16,000. And to line 73, snow removal, to sum of $229,000. And to line 75, veterans benefits, to sum of $37,409. And to line 80, Monty Tech assessment, to sum of $49,244. To amend amounts voted under Article 19 of the May 4, 2013 annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, what is your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee.
We recommend approval.
Mr. Toll, you going to speak on this article?
No, it's too long, I've heard.
I've been asking, in KPR. Miss Bydell.
So for this article, it is the green sheet, the non-fluorescent green sheet, if you are interested. So you may wonder why we have to go through this process of remanding the budget. But the budget is approved annually by town meeting. And it is approved in functional categories. So you approve the categories of general government, department of public works, education, unclassified, and so forth. But when we need to make adjustments during the fiscal year, we can only do that except in certain circumstances by coming back to town meeting. So that's why you have this article before you today. So we just went through in the motion, all of the two missing forms. But we are projecting for the close of the year to have surpluses. And the surpluses actually are shown in parentheses, which probably seems backwards to you. A surplus of $16,400 in the maturing debt category. And this is because we had to make an estimate for the school building project, on what we thought we would borrow during the fiscal year and what the interest cost would be. And the interest costs are less than what we projected. So that's why we have a surplus there. In general government, unclassified, we have a pretty large surplus of $179,800. And that is mostly because of two things. Health insurance. Our health insurance renewal in fiscal 14 was very good, but we had lower enrollment during the course of the year. And we also made changes to our plan designs that affected both active employees and retired employees. But for retirees, their renewal went from July 1st to January 1st. So we had to make a projection of what we thought the January 1st renewal would be for health insurance for retirees, and actually came in better. So we had a significant savings there. And then the other big surplus, so to speak, in this category is the reserve fund. Each year we budget money for the finance committee to hold in reserve for any emergencies that come up through the year. And we didn't have any this year. So we held it to the end of the year to help with the snow and ice deficit that we have to address today. And then in terms of the projected shortages, $10,000 in legal expenses. Our legal expenses are higher than we anticipated. In public safety, we are anticipating a shortage of $37,407. Snow removal is the big one. We had a very heavy winter. The projected, or the actual deficit here is $229,000. We had budgeted $250,000, and we overspent that by $229,000. And veterans benefits, we have 10 individuals receiving veterans benefits this year. This is the highest number that we've had in a very long time. The town does receive a reimbursement from the state for 75% of the benefits that we pay out, but it's in the following year. So we have to cover that this year, and we'll reimburse next year. And then the last item is Monty Tech assessment. After our town meeting last year, we were notified by Monty Tech that we would have a supplemental assessment. And that was because of the change in the funding formula. And we had hoped that we could cover that this year, so that we wouldn't have to pay it next year. And we are able to cover it this year. And so we're going to take care of that. And that means we have $49,000 available next year. So in addition to the surpluses within the budget, we're asking for an additional appropriation for free cash of the amount of $153,933. And then closing out two small articles, one for $1,500 and one for $2,439. And those two articles are related to money approved by town meeting in the past years for school regionalization studies. And now that we're finally past school regionalization, we're able to close those out to help fund this deficit.
Thank you, Ms. Bydell. Anybody have any questions about Article 9? Seeing no one in the microphone, please, if you're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Article 10, please. Jesus al. Mr. Honore, I move the town vote to pass over Article 10. There is second. Selectman, your recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Tell us why we're passing it over?
It relates to the firefighters' collective bargaining agreement. No agreement doesn't reach at this point.
Okay. All those in favor of passing over Article 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Article 11, Mr. Alonso.
I move the town vote to pass over Article 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Tell us why we're moving to pass it over, Mr. Alonso.
As with the firefighters' bargaining agreement, this is for the DPW laborers' collective bargaining agreement, and no agreement doesn't meet as a yes.
We would want to discuss or debate Article 10. I can. Now, with the microphone, please, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Pass unanimously. I get the numbers wrong. That's Article 11, thank you. Article 12, please.
I move the town vote to pass over Article 12.
There is second. Selectman, your recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Tell us why we're passing it over, Mr. Burton.
As with the other two articles, this is DPW laborers' collective bargaining agreement, and no agreement doesn't meet.
And would you discuss this article? Now, with the microphone, please, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor of Article 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Article 13, Mr. Matthews.
I move the town vote to pass over Article 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Tell us why we're passing it over, Mr. Matthews?
I think so. Tell me anyway. The town's in agreement with Article 13.
Anybody waiting to discuss Article 13? Now, with the microphone, please, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor of Article 13, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Article 14, what I'm passing that one over? Mr. Toll. You've been talking all along. That's right. Doesn't like you.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $621,753.74. And to transfer the sum of $43.08 from Article 8 of the May 3, 2008 annual town meeting. And $290.01 from Article 13 of the May 1, 2010 annual meeting. And $12,714.57 from Article 19 of the May 7, 2011 annual town meeting. And $36,033.60 from Article 16 of the May 5, 2012 annual town meeting. And $18,316.28 from Article 14 of the May 4, 2013 annual town meeting. And to borrow the sum of $425,000 for a total appropriation of $1,114,152 to fund the FY15 capital plan as appearing in the capital planning report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
The board of selectmen recommends the approval of $1,114,152.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval in the amount of $1,114,152.
Just so I play it, although saying no is not incorrect.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Now, Mr. Toll, Ms. Bydell said she could have preferred to you to explain.
See, the town manager's going to make a brief presentation on this. Go ahead.
So the same slide that is up on the wall, you can find on page 6 in your warrant, if you're having trouble reading, it's up on the small print. So we have a separate capital planning committee that is made up of members of other committees. There's a member from the finance committee, board of selectmen, the school committee, and the former planning director, Marion Benson, who has retired, is a member of the committee. And then we have one resident at large who serves on the committee. They do an awful lot of work on behalf of the town and the departments in reviewing capital arbiters. They start their process in August. They issue a packet to each of the departments and ask the departments to submit their capital items for the next five years. They really focus on the next year, but they ask for five years, so that the committee and the town are aware of what the needs are, the capital needs are, of the departments going forward. This committee meets on a weekly basis and reviews in great detail all of the requests that are submitted by the departments, and makes a recommendation to you on what should be funded in the upcoming fiscal year. In this year, there were 23 items that were submitted for consideration, and they are what is showing up on the wall or on page 6. And they went through all of these, reviewed them, and made recommendations. And this year, they are recommending that 19 of the 23 items that were submitted are approved for funding. And they are asbestos abatement within the school for $138,000. Replacement of fire engine 1 for $150,000. Radio infrastructure for $40,000 within public safety. Replacement of one marked police vehicle for $46,000. Doing some work at the public safety building, epoxying floors for $12,000. Purchasing equipment for the police department, rifles, shotguns, and shields for $14,000. Operating the control system at one of the schools for $14,000. Technology within the school department for $25,000. And technology townwide for $40,000. Replacing carpeting at the senior center for $10,000. Replacing car 2 within the fire department at $30,000. Replacing an asphalt roller at DPW for $35,000. Creating a parking lot at Marshall Park, which is something that's greatly needed if you've ever tried to drive down, or in the area of the park, and there's a base now, $37,000. Some HVAC repairs at the senior center, $15,798. Some additional town technology for $14,400. And the reason why they're separated out, I failed to mention, that the capital planning committee recommended items in priorities. And priorities 1, priority 2, and priority 3, that we did that in the event that there wasn't enough funding to fund all of the projects that they wanted to support this year. Some additional technology in school for $25,000. Repair of a sprinkler system at the senior center, $11,430. Replacing carpet at the library, $36,524. And then finally, the HVAC system at the river for $20,000. In the funding sources for these, we are asking to borrow $425,000 for fire engine 1. What we would like to do is, A, split the payments of that 550 over five years, pay cash from the first year, and then finance the rest over four years because of the long-term life expectancy of that vehicle. We will close out some prior year capital articles in the amount of $67,398. And then the remainder, $621,754, will come from the operator.
Thank you, Ms. Bydell. I would like to discuss some of your favorite articles, Article 14. Microphone, this requires two thirds, charge your vote. All those in favor of Article 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Honore. Is everybody near you, okay? Trying to make this quick, clock drops to 12:30. First, the motion?
Yes, absolutely.
I move that the town appropriate $624,000 for the purpose of acquiring for restoration and passive recreation purposes by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, a portion of a certain parcel of property owned as the lane property, shown as the Sussner's map, 21 parcel 17, off Holman Street, said portion consisting of 168 acres, more or less. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, 3, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds or notes therefore. That said land to be conveyed to Seton Town, Lunenburg, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8C, as it may hereafter be amended, and other pertinent Massachusetts statutes relating to conservation, to be managed and controlled by the Conservation Commission of the Town of Lunenburg.
I do have one, yeah, thank you. So definitely, the priority of the article, the most acute is the block of what brings it.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a, you may, it's like, there may be, second page of that. There appears to be a comma. Thank you. Keep going, Mr. Kibbe. And that the Conservation Commission be authorized, with the approval of the board of selectmen, to enter into all agreements and execute any and all such instruments as may be necessary on the part of the town to effect such acquisitions, and to obtain any grants or reimbursements for such acquisitions. Provided, however, that the funds appropriated hereunder shall not be expended unless the town receives approval for a land grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Conservation Services pursuant to general laws, Chapter 132A, Section 11, to reimburse the town for a portion of the cost of the acquisition of the property. Thank you. Now, we do have a second. Second. Selectman, what's your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Thank you. Bincom?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. Mr. Kibbe, now, I'd like to know, you might tell us about the project.
Very good. Well, I'd like to start by asking for a show of hands, if I may, just to see who this made you new to. I feel like we've done a good job of getting information out to the community in newspaper articles, the internet, public site blogs, and everything else. Is this new to anybody in the room?
A lot of people came to talk to me. Maybe I'll tell you, for one person. And when it was quite advertised, I thought, oh, that's over between 2 and 8. Maybe just for my purposes, you can make sure everybody knows their names.
So the reason I take that poll, because I want to make this as brief as we can, and I want to beat a dead horse if in fact the horse is already dead. So we'll take a moment to go through this. I'll chew my very gusset over quickly, and we'll have a chance to have a conversation if there are any questions that come up. Just to start, this is, an acquisition that first came before us in October. We had a joint meeting of the board of selectmen, the planning board, the conservation commission, the open space committee got together to look at this opportunity. And the board of selectmen thought it was compelling enough to form a team to negotiate with the sellers on behalf of the town. That team comprised of myself, as chairman of the open space committee, Toby Barcaza from the planning board, Paula Bertram from the board of selectmen, and J.J. Cote from the conservation commission. So we started actively working with the sellers back in October. But it's really, it goes well beyond that. The planning for this property really started in our open space planning process. So what I'd like to do today is touch on a little bit about the open space plan, and tell you a little bit more about the open space plan that we have for our open space and recreation resources in town. And then talk specifically about what makes the lane property so special for conservation purposes, conservation and recreation purposes. And then give you an overview, a quick overview of the finances that are detailed here. I had a hard enough time reading the motions. There's a lot in there. We'll try to put that in the lane in terms of the context of the conversation this morning. First of all, a brief overview of the open space and recreation plan. The open space committee was formed in 2008 in response to the fact that we had an open space plan that was many years out of date. These plans are generally only good for five to seven years. Ours is 10 years out of date. Open space plans are important topics for planning purposes, and they make eligible certain reimbursement grant programs to the state to have one of these on the books. So it makes sense from a planning perspective and from a financial perspective to have a current open space and recreation plan. So the open space committee was formed in 2008. We worked for a couple of years to go through our land inventory and go through a planning process, which involved a great deal of local resident input. We had surveys that were put out to local residents, we had public forums, you know, we did our very best to get as much input from the community as possible. And two things came through really loud and clear in the open space plan, the planning process. First was that community members were really interested in maintaining our rural character. People liked the fact that, you get to Lunenburg, it's pretty, a nice place to live. You go outside in the morning, birds are chirping, and you drive down Link after Avenue, and it's gorgeous. And we just are really strong supporters of this beautiful community that we live in on, and they want to see us maintain that rural character. And the other thing is, the community members said, we have a great deal of resources already in town. What can we do to improve and enhance those existing conservation and open space recreation assets in town? So in terms of maintaining rural character, conserving important habitats and open spaces for conservation purposes is one way you can do to maintain rural character. One other thing we identified in the open space plan, just as a point of reference, is forming an agricultural commission, passing a right to farm bylaw, which is later in this agenda. That was also in the open space and recreation plan. I think you're missed if I didn't mention that, given that the right to farm bylaw is later in the agenda. Secondly, enhancing and improving our existing open space resources. We have about 1,900 acres of conservation land that are owned in town, in town right now. It's about 11% of the total area in town of Lunenburg. Over a quarter of that land, we can't give to. It's land. There's no parking area, no trail that gets you there, there's no road running that gets you there. So over a quarter of that land, part of which abuts the lane property, has no meaningful public access. We have this great resource, but can we use it? And so that's part, a big part of the reason we're talking about the lane property today. The open space committee also identified priorities for evaluating prospective acquisitions. Those priorities, we created a list of six different priorities. Parcels that are either greater than 50 acres in size. They contain important habitat resources. They provide important public access, recreational opportunities. They provide senior for rural character, to protect the rural character in town. They're contiguous to other municipal open spaces. Or they support agricultural viability. And what the open space committee said, out of those six criteria, if we could find properties in town that meet at least three of those criteria, that are either undeveloped or unprotected, then the town should at least consider those as prospective open space acquisitions. If you apply those six criteria to the inventory of undeveloped, unprotected lands in town, you would find that very few properties in town actually fit that. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to be as proactive, but also as smart about this as possible. We don't want to protect everything. This isn't about locking up all of the undeveloped, unprotected land in town, no. That's not the objective of these criteria. These criteria are identified to figure out which are the highest priority properties. It's as much to give us a tool to say no to properties, as it is a tool for us to say yes to properties. How can we evaluate properties in terms of their value in open space? How can we evaluate properties in terms of their, uh, value of open space purposes? We suggest the property being integrated those criteria, the land property hits five. This is an exceedingly important property, and we knew this when we started doing the open space and recreation plan in two thousand and eleven, when it was finally approved. We applied these criteria, we knew just at, at the outset that the land property was important. So let's talk about the land property, and talk about those resource values and how hits those criteria. The land property is approximately three hundred and eight acres in size, you can see it's divided by Holman Street here, about a hundred acres on the west side of Holman Street, about two hundred acres on the eastward side of Holman Street. Uh, this map may be difficult to read under these lighting conditions, so let me orient you. This is the town boundary between Townsend and Lunenburg, this is Chase Road thirteen here, Orton Subaru, for those, you use those kinds of landmarks, uh, Northfield Road, Gilchrist Street, Valley Road here, uh, let's see, Monty Orchard, Hickory Hills Lake. This is Large Town Forest. Large Town Forest is two hundred and eighty acres in size, you'll note, and it has no road front on any road, it has no parking area, technically has no practical way for the public to get to. There is a pedestrian easement that the town has that goes up a private driveway, wraps around a private home, and enters the land property before you actually get to the town forest. So you have to get to the, you have to cross private properties, two different private properties in order to get to the land property. So you, you can't get there for me, no, no way to access this wonderful resource, two hundred and eighty acres of town forest. The lanes acquired this property, starting in the late nineteen forties, nineteen forty-nine, they bought, purchased a house, it's here, small field, it's a barn on the west side of the, you tell, a homestead, so to speak, is, is really concentrated, uh, they started buying the property and assembled a series of properties, starting in nineteen forty-nine, grew the deal to sixty, and have owned it. Basically, just as open space, enrolled in Chapter sixty-one, which is, uh, open space current use taxation, uh, since then. What I'd like to do now is I'll go through the rest of the resources on this property and pay attention particularly to the eastwardly side of the road. This, I think, tells the story about why we designed the strategy that we have. So if you look at it slightly different, look at it from wildlife habitat perspective, uh, the State's Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, Natural Heritage and endangered species program, did a statewide inventory of important habitats for conservation purposes. Uh, they've designated four habitats, which is solid green in there, and they've designated what's called critical natural landscapes. These are of, of regional and statewide importance, habitat of regional and statewide importance, uh, for, uh, open space conservation purposes. The reason these areas in particular, uh, that coincide with the land property were identified because this is a large, unfragmented, interior forest type habitat. It's not impinged upon by roads or housing development, it's large and unfragmented. If, if, we go nowhere else today and learn nothing else about this today, is that from a conservation perspective, bigger is better. You can protect big blocks of land, uh, wildlife and grass, it's good for genetics and all kinds of other, other reasons. So, important wildlife habitat. Not just woodland forest resources that are included on this property, but it's also aquatic habitat. There are over a mile and a quarter, just on the eastwardly side of the road, of brooks and streams on, 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 on this property, particularly the Mulpus Brook. Mulpus Brook, uh, is flowing from, uh, the northwest part of town, which is this light blue color here, through the land property. Mulpus Brook and Catawba Brook in town have the two primary drains used in town, this is one of the main stems of the main drainage in town. Uh, it's, it's colored light blue here because it has high quality, very cold, very clean water in this stream, supports native, uh, brook trout, it's called, they call it from a habitat perspective, a cold water fisher. Uh, native eastern brook trout are indicative species of high quality water, not only important for aquatic habitats and wildlife, but also is primary inflow to Hickory Hills Lake. Hickory Hills Lake drains out into the continuation of the Mulpus Brook, which flows through Cowreek Conservation Area and continues on through town. It's important for water quality as well, and a mile and a quarter of streams flow through this property. The main stem of the Mulpus Brook is met by north branch of the Mulpus Brook, which concludes on the eastwardly side of the, of that land property, and the south branch of the, uh, Mulpus Brook concludes on the eastwardly side of the land property. Very important for water quality as well. So when you look at all of these things we just talked about, three hundred and eight acres of property, obviously bigger than fifty acres in terms of our criteria, loaded with important wildlife habitat, connected to existing municipal open spaces that have no public access, now this has road drainage on multiple roads, uh, clearly a priority, right? This just jumps off the page as a priority, when you apply those criteria to the undeveloped, unprotected, uh, properties in town, you can be hard pressed to find a higher priority than the land property. Last summer, that property went on the market, went on the market for two point five-five million dollars. That's a lot of money, but three hundred and eight acres of property with low road front. Part of the marketing materials showed a conceptual development, I think, anybody who's used to seeing what types of developments get built in Lunenburg would probably agree this is probably conservative in terms of, uh, potential build-out for a three hundred and eight acre piece of property. Here's Holman Street, this is the Orientium, this is Northfield Road, here's Gilchrist, uh, this is Chase Road over here. Again, looking at the eastwardly side of the road, this is showing a twelve, uh, lot subdivision on this piece of property. Uh, two things, uh, that this motivated us. One is looking at the house lots. Average household in, uh, Lunenburg from a residential development standpoint brings in roughly forty-five hundred dollars in, uh, tax revenues in any given year. It costs well over six thousand dollars in services, to provide services for that home. We know that it costs, uh, over eleven thousand dollars a year just to educate and single people in school. Uh, so the cost of residential development does not pay for itself in revenue, and so this also stands a chance of creating a, a real, um, uh, long-term financial issue for us as well, not just for conservation, it's a financial issue as well. If this were to be developed, we would stand a chance of having more expenses, not less, uh, as a result of that development. So when we saw this marketed, we said, you know what, this is a really important conservation project for all of the different reasons, uh, I just went through. And, but two point five-five million dollars, we could never expect a pound to pay for a price of two point five-five million dollars, that, that's untenable. I, I would have a hard time standing in front of you to advocate for the protection of this property at two point five-five million dollars for three hundred and eighty acres of land. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. We said, how can we be proactive about this? Rather than waiting for, we've all seen in recent years, the writer first refusal comes up, right, with these Chapter sixty-one, we saw with the Arrow Farm property, we saw with the Lee property in recent years. We get a, we get a, uh, developer comes in, makes an offer on this piece of property because it has a Chapter sixty-one, the writer first refusal on it, comes to us, and now it's a separate position, we have to consider it small or not, based on a developer's, uh, dream of developing this piece of property. And it has a purchase price on it, maybe it's not two point five-five million dollars, maybe it's three point three million dollars, maybe it's three point one million dollars. But we have a hundred and twenty days to make that decision, to come up with a final. It's, it's just an untenable position to be in. So we said, let's, instead of doing that, though, let's be proactive, let's put together this team, and let's work with the seller, and see if we can negotiate that gets us exactly the resources we want, at a price that we think we can afford, on a timeline that we think we can live on. And so that's what we did. Uh, starting last October, our team engaged the seller in negotiations to focus primarily on the eastwardly side of the road. That's where all the resources are concentrated. We don't want to protect it all, we want to protect only the most important resources for public access, wildlife resources, recreational activities, provide access, uh, meaningful public access, market. And so we put together a deal with the seller, uh, that protects a hundred and sixty-eight acres, as shown here. The deal we put together, we have a signed purchase and sale contract with, with the seller, offered, uh, this lot here, Lot E, as shown on this plan, which is just under a hundred and sixty-eight acres, and the seller had, uh, had his own option to include what's, uh, this five acre parcel here, which is, uh, uh, shown as, uh, Lot C. The agreement and the price is very important, underscore here, we agreed to thirty-six hundred dollars per acre for this configuration, Lot E and/or Lot C included, uh, to be thirty-six hundred dollars per acre for a praised value, whichever is lesser, that's number one. So it's whichever is lesser of those numbers, thirty-six hundred dollars per acre for a praised value. And the seller said it's contingent upon a state grant. Uh, there is a state grant, which we're going to talk about here in a second, that will reimburse the town for expenditures for acquisitions of open space, just like, we said, not only do we want to acquire this property, but we want to get the very best deal we can and take advantage of the state grant, so that we minimize the amount of expenditure that the town has to actually lay out to acquire this piece of property. A word about the, the state grant, known as the LAND GRAND, LAND being an acronym that stands for, uh, Local Acquisitions for Natural Diversity. This is a grant that's administered by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, the Division of Conservation Services, number one, it requires an up-to-date open space and recreation plan that we have, uh, and, and this grant program provides municipalities reimbursement for open space acquisitions exactly like this. The reimbursement is sixty, for Lunenburg qualifies for sixty-four percent reimbursement in this grant program. So whatever we spend, we get sixty-four percent of that back, uh, from, from this grant program, with a maximum of four hundred thousand dollars. Grant applications are due, uh, the middle of June for this fiscal year. Uh, grant awards are made in October or November, uh, and, and, you know, generally sort of depending on what political cycle is, but those announcements come out completely in October or November. And it's a reimbursement program, which means, we have to buy the property, we have to meet the grant requirements, and then they reimburse us. Uh, so we wouldn't see, if, if we go forward with this, uh, project, we wouldn't see that reimbursement until, uh, uh, the end of fiscal year fifteen, of June two thousand and fifteen, right about then, we would see the reimbursement for the grant. Again, the vote we're taking today, the motion that is on the table, is contingent upon the receipt of the state grant. We, if come November, we don't get the state grant, we don't do this deal. We are making contingent this deal upon the state grant, very important part of it. Lunenburg has a long history, one of the questions that's come up a number of times is, well, okay, we're making this contingent upon the grant, what's the chances we get this? Number one, I went through the resources with you. This, this checks every one of the boxes in the grant criteria in terms of resources that are on this property, which it has them in state. And the fact that Large Town Forest joins this, that's, we, the, the town of Lunenburg is one of the first communities that took advantage of this grant program beginning in nineteen sixty. A lot of the open spaces we have in that inventory of nineteen hundred acres of conservation land in town were funded with this very grant program, most of which were done before nineteen seventy-five, most of those acquisitions were done nineteen seventy-five. We received thirty-four different grants from this grant program in the past, thirty-three of them before nineteen sixty-five. The last one was fifteen years ago. So we haven't applied for this grant in a very long time, and there are some communities that go back to this grant program on an annual basis. They're going to be excited to see a grant, uh, a grant application from a different community, our community in particular, to access other lands and get money in the past, get all the resources. Can we guarantee this grant, can we get awarded? No. Will we compete, very above for it? You betcha, that's our available message. You are listening, great. So, this is the deal we've worked out, and then, uh, this sort of gives it a little bit of, of more complete detail. This is the vision, this is what we're trying to do, uh, with the vote today. Large Town Forest has been ringing here, the portion of the property we would acquire is highlighted in the heavy red, here, a hundred and sixty-eight acres. Uh, the five acre piece the, the landowner has sold us, uh, is, is not going to be part of the deal, which is, uh, fine, that's the deal we worked out with them, that, that aired discretion. Uh, the remainder of the land is a hundred acres on the westerly side of Holman Street, and the remainder portion of the property that includes the house and some acres around it is not part of the deal. What we're looking to do is we're looking to create a gateway to what would now become a four hundred and fifty acre block of conservation land of Large Town Forest. You have road frontage on Gil, on, on Holman Street, you drive down Holman Street, but you may be aware, the ridge over the Mulpus Brook is closed, and, uh, and, and so it's basically a dead end in that stretch, and you show up and there's woods. What the, the seller started the negotiations with was trying to get us to just acquire a little strip of land between what they would then develop the rest of the road frontage there. That's not meaningful public access. Do you want to go for a hike and go show up at a piece of town property on a Saturday morning while both neighbors are mowing their lawn and walk down a little strip of land? Do you feel like you've arrived at the town forest and go for a hike? No. We wanted you to arrive on a wooden piece of frontage, so you'll be able to pull in to a nice parking area, get out of your car, birds are chirping, the river's flowing, you get off the trail, and you go for a nice hike. What's shown in the dotted lines on this, on this map are, are an existing trail map, there are trails on that property already, uh, that will immediately give us access to this, to this property. It also protects, the, the, this is the main stem of the Mulpus Brook here, this is the north branch of, of, so the Brook is the boundary between what is being reserved here. A mile and a quarter of Mulpus Brook on this property. Really a tremendous deal. Because of the contingency on the state grant, it's really tremendous. At the full price, which is what we're asking to be approved today, thirty-six hundred dollars per acre for roughly a hundred and sixty-eight acres, the acquisition price is six hundred and four thousand dollars. We also have some due diligence costs that are, that have to be done as part of an acquisition, title certification, we estimate that to be ten thousand dollars, survey, we estimate that cost to be ten thousand dollars. So to actually acquire this piece of property, we're looking at six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, that's why that moved in the, uh, in the motion, six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in total acquisition cost. But again, this vote is contingent upon receipt of the state grant. Sixty-four percent, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, it's three hundred and ninety-nine, three sixty. Maximum grant reward is four hundred thousand dollars. How many of you think that is coincidence? So we were very thoughtful about this. We, we said, let's maximize our ability to take advantage of this grant, let's get as much of this land as we can for a cost that will keep it as low to the town as humanly possible. That's what we've done. So the total cost of this, if this goes through today, would be less than two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for access to four hundred and fifty acres of land. You find me a better deal than that, and I'm buying. Uh, this is a very good deal. So what, uh, for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, uh, we're going to have to acquire, the way this works is we have, the, the way the deal is with the sellers, we have, we have to meet town meeting, we get this approval today, we apply for the state grant, state grant, community, we shoot, we apply for that, awards aren't made until October, November. The way we design the deal is if they, uh, notify us that we've gotten the grant by Halloween, and we close by the end of December. If they notify us that we got, if the state notifies us that we got the grant after Halloween, we have to close by, uh, middle of February. That means between December and June, uh, December of two thousand and fourteen and June of two thousand and fifteen, which is the end of fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, we'll have to carry the cost on a short-term borrow, the entire cost, until we're reimbursed by the state again. The reimbursement of the state would happen, uh, before June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen. So the plan would be to borrow on a short-term basis, uh, the six hundred and twenty, uh, four thousand dollars, and then, once we close, and we get reimbursed, then, uh, following year, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, the Board of Selectmen work to re-... board of the treasurer will convert the balance roughly $225,000 or less, right? The appraisal comes in, less or less for the remainder. Now, the selectmen and the treasurer can determine the bond term, that's at their discretion. So just as an example, for $224,000, if they chose to bond this for five years, the cost would be on an annual basis, would be about $48,000, 40 per year. If they choose to bond this for 20 years, the cost would be $58,000 per year. This would be funded under our regular debt service. This is not a proposition two and a half, this is not debt exclusion, this is just under our regular debt service. We've advocated, and hopefully, you know, we've decided to fund a bond that's cool at 30 years, the long-term capital investment, this is conservation, this is correct. Makes sense to bond this for 20 years. You could easily bond it for five as well, but it makes sense to bond this for 20 years, it's correct. We promised, up to now, we've been saying that the appraisal would be completed in advance of town meeting. The appraisal has been completed, we're in the process of reviewing that appraisal with the seller, because there is a contingency if the appraisal comes in less than the agreed to price. The appraisal has come in less than the agreed to price. We're working through that review with the appraisal right now, with the seller right now. We can't guarantee that that's, you know, we can't disclose that number now, we're still negotiating that with the seller, but here's a highlight of the something that lowers than the $3,600 we're building today. This is likely going to cost us less than what we're back here voting on this one. Again, to summarize, this is strategic, it's going to be hard for us to find a more important property in town. It's proactive, we are acquiring only the most important portions of this property. Out of 380 acres, we're proposing only conserving 168 acres, just a little more than half. Not an all or nothing kind of thing. And it's cost effective, again, contingent on the state grant. This would be regular debt service, falls within our normal operating. It's not town investment for access to 450 acres, it's $225,000 cap maximum, maybe less. And we're avoiding the long-term cost of this portion of the property being developed. So the team is proud of the deal we're bringing to the town, we think it is a very good deal, you know, we think it's worthy of your support. This is a summary of that. So again, you're authorized, the motion that's before you authorize us to purchase 168 acres, it authorizes us to spend the full, to spend the full amount, up to $624,000. But it requires us to first get an award of the state grant, so the state grant is a contingency that we don't continue to. So the total cost of the town will be $225,000 or less, 168 acres. So with that, thank you, Mr. Gibby.
Investigating this property and doing the research with the whole committee and bringing forward what I think is probably one of the best land acquisition possibilities that could be available to Loonberg, so thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Gibby.
Just because we're into thanking our volunteers, as you should, welcome to the committee. Father Berger from Board of Selectmen, Toby Burkettis of Planning Board, J.J. Kotay, Conservation Division. Thank you. Open to acquisition advice. Open state acquisition advice, it must be an announcement. If anybody wants to speak on Article 15. I think we're ready to vote. This requires two terms. All those who favor Article 15, please sit down by saying aye. Vote, pass, adjournments. I move the town vote to authorize the purchase of the long chapter four, section 53, a student transportation offset. We're receiving funds, receiving funds for student transportation fees up to $31,000. That fund should be used by the school departments to offset the cost of cost transportation. There is second. Selectmen, your recommendation?
Selectmen voted to approve Article 3 to 0, the warning statute.
You've been told. Finance Committee, welcome to the floor. Thank you. Tell us about this meeting yourself.
I'm referring to the town manager for the presentation.
Back to work, Eric.
Back to the exciting stuff.
Thank you.
So the school, one of our public schools has been collecting bus transportation fees for the last two years. We've been collecting about $31,000 a year, and the generally accepted accounting, or accounting of this is to have these funds come into a transportation offset received. So we wanted to have a couple of years' experience to make sure we knew what was coming in before we asked town meeting to set up this fund. This is a little different than a revolving fund, because once the appropriation is made on July 1st, a full amount of the appropriation is available. A revolving fund, you can only spend what is in the fund. But it is not different than the way that we have been handling it in practice, because on July 1st, all appropriations are available in full. So this isn't any different. We were required to get the approval of the Department of Revenue to establish this fund, which we did, and we are seeking an appropriation of $31,000 in fiscal 15, which as you can see is slightly less than has been collected in the past few years. If there is any surplus over $31,000 collected in fiscal 15, we would revert back to the revolving fund.
Who I'd like to, if anyone wants to discuss, Article 16. Someone who likes to comment on this area. All those who favor Article 16, since we're starting, please say aye. Vote. Article 16. Article 17.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $74,721 for free cash and transit to the stabilization fund.
There is second. Selectmen, your recommendation?
I want your recommendation to approve.
Finance Committee.
We recommend approval.
Mr. Alonzo, you've got this issue to refer.
I'm going to say one statement, that this is the amount needed to maintain a 5% balance in this transit stabilization fund of our operating fund, the town manager will be following the representation.
She will. And Ms. Dugtales with, I'm getting there. Ms. Dugtales with Article 18, which is the budget, in which she's going to make the presentation on 17 and 18, if there is a relation. Ms. Bydell.
The only other thing that I would add is that it is very important for the town to follow its financial policies, and as stated, we do have a policy that we retain 5% in reserves in stabilization fund, and the reason that this is important is because it helps us maintain or increase our bond rating. And our bond rating was actually increased a couple of months ago from a AA minus to a AA plus, which is the second highest bond rating that is available to any entity that has a bond rating. This is very important as we are proceeding with the school construction project, that we maintain the highest bond rate as possible. If we go out to permanently finance that project, we can obtain the lowest interest rate available to loans.
That's it? I thought you were also going to do the budget. I thought you were going to give an overall, a little bit of a, this is my intention, before we, to invite the people to discuss this. All those who favor Article 17, please sit down by saying aye. Vote, pass, adjournments, please. Okay. Now we'll get through vote by Article 18. Ms. Burton.
I move the town vote to raise appropriate $28,188,771 to transfer $10,858 from the state to the town for appropriation. Transfer $23,525 from the sewer edging by the town. Transfer $770,439 from the sewer enterprise that is in revenue. Transfer $31,000 from the student transportation offset fee fund. And transfer $62,781 from the water edge in the government to pray the charges consent to the town for fiscal year 2015. Picks salaries and compensation for all the officials of the town and any other items to the town. We'll take it from there.
There is second. Selectmen, your recommendation? Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, welcome to the floor.
Now, if you're new to town meeting, and I spoke to one gentleman, I hope he'll come back again, new to town meeting, here's how we do it. We're going to go through the categories, subcategories and full categories of the budget. What color is that? It's red.
It's blue.
It's blue. And if I think if you look at it, it's going to be on the column far left to your right, is that correct?
Yes.
On the blue, okay. But I'm going to read the subcategories of the main category, and we're going to go through it that way. If you have something you want to address in that category when I say it, all you need to say is hold, and we'll get back to debating that particular category. When we're done with all of the debates of those different categories, then we're going to get into voting for the entire budget. Is that clear with you? Column far left to your right. Total maturing debt, $2,978,56. Total general government unclassified, $2,217,69. Total general government, $1,237,103. Total central purchasing, $52,950. Police, subtotal police, $1,330,976. Subtotal fire, $673,529. Subtotal radio loss, $249,513. Subtotal public protection, $187,265. Total protection, $2,441,283. Health of sanitation, $65,029. Total facilities and buildings, $590,754. Solid waste recycling, $193,754. Council on Aging, $106,812. Veterans, $22,900. Total assistance, $123,712. News, $129,712. Thank you. Total school, $17,465,477. Library, $353,205. Total budget, $29,79,384. I heard, Joe. I had a hold on school. Okay, I didn't hear it, you're allowed. Understand we have a hold on schools, when obviously we're going to come back to this. Ms. Bydell, if you'd like to make the presentation.
Okay, so there are two handouts for this presentation. There's a white handout that has a yellow on it. That is different than what is on page 21 in the warrant. And then the blue sheet that we just went through is the same as pages 22 and 24 in the warrant, but there are two changes, and they affect education, and they have already been made in the motion, so the motion is correct. But the two changes are to increase line 70, school department, by $67,232, for a total, a new total in that line of $16,754,633. And to decrease line 80, which is the money tech assessment, by that same amount for a new total of $710,814. Those are the only two changes to what you have on the blue sheet and in the warrant.
White of order, Ms. Bydell.
I think line 70 doesn't, line 70 should be in Loonberg, because 70 is not. Line 70 in our, in our.
Oh, 79, line 70.
Could you read the hat, just we have it for the record.
So, line 70, school department, is actually line 79 in the school department. So the budget process that the town goes through is fairly extensive. We are actually working on the budget for about five to six months each fiscal year. We start the process in the fall with the presentation of the five-year financial forecast. And that document shows based on our current level of spending, what our, what our current needs are, and what our revenue estimate projections are over a five-year period, whether that's going to produce, we're going to be able to fund it, or have a surplus. When that document was presented in the fall, we showed for fiscal 2015 that we anticipated a deficit of $549,904. And that was based on what, what we thought at the time for both revenues and expenses. So the way we start the process, at least for the last several years, when we project a deficit, is that each department is given a target budget. And that target budget is something that I feel that as we go through the process, we can fund. It doesn't have anything to do with what I or any of the boards or committees think that we need, but it's what we can afford based on the revenue projections that we have. So the departments in January or December, in December they're issued their target budget, they go through a process internally of putting together their department request, and they return that to me in January. And then through the end of January and through February, I have to review all of those and make a recommendation. My recommendation, my charter, is due to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen on February 15th. And the Finance Committee goes through about a two-month process where they review my recommendation and all of the individual department requests to prepare themselves to make a recommendation to you today. So our budget is two parts, revenue and expenditures. We have four sources of revenue. Property tax, which is 65% of our revenues, state aid, which is 22% of our revenues, local receipts, 8%, and other available funds is 5% of our budget. In terms of property tax, we are allowed by state law without voter approval to raise property taxes by two and a half percent per year. That two and a half percent in fiscal 2015 will bring in $485,646 in additional revenue. We also make an estimate on new growth, new residential and commercial growth, and we are estimating $150,000 in additional property tax revenue in 2015 as a result of new growth. We then would add in any voter-approved overrides or debt exclusions. We don't have any overrides, so there's nothing added for that. But in terms of debt exclusions, in January, this community voted overwhelmingly for the school project, so in fiscal 15, we will start seeing the impact of the debt service related to the school building project. The estimate on interest cost for the project in 2015 is $176,809. We will see an increase in that debt exclusion in fiscal 16 and 17, and then finally, if the project goes according to plan in fiscal 18, in fiscal 18, we will see the full impact of that project, which is estimated at about $459,000. we will see the full impact of that project, which is estimated at about $459 for the average household. State law requires us to assume 100% collection of property taxes. So, our estimate for property taxes for fiscal 15 is $21,103,77. Our next largest source of revenue is state aid. And the first indication on what we have for state aid for fiscal year is when the governor releases his budget, which is known as House Two, and that happens in January. This year, we were fortunate enough to have a local aid resolution. We don't always have one of those. And a local aid resolution is a resolution agreed to by both the House and the Senate on what state aid will be for the coming fiscal year. The state operates on the same fiscal budget as the town, so they operate on a July 1st-June 3rd budget year. But they don't have to have their budget approved as early as we do. We, as a town, have to have our budget approved, even though it doesn't have to be balanced. And I do know that. It's much easier if it is, but we have to have something adopted at our annual town meeting, which is today. So, between March and May, or when all of the cities and towns have town meetings, and they have to have budgets adopted. But sometimes the state, most often the state doesn't have a budget adopted until around Memorial Day, sometimes even later. So, this local aid resolution is very helpful to us because we know what our state aid will be. And our two big categories of state aid are chapter 70, which is education aid. We will receive $5,605,872 in fiscal 15, which is a 6.57% increase, which is excellent for us. Certainly not all that we can hope for, but much better than we've seen over the last few years. And then our next large category is unrestricted general government aid, which used to be known as lottery aid. And we will receive $940,983 for an increase of 5.2%. This is a graph that shows what our state aid has been for the last 10 years. You can see in 2005 through 2009, we received a decent increase year after year at state aid. Then we received a pretty significant cut in fiscal 2010. And we're really now just slightly above where we were in fiscal 2009. And we are far behind where we should be if we had been receiving the kinds of increases that we've had been in past years. And the biggest cut to state aid is this unrestricted general government aid lottery aid, which has not, the distribution to cities and towns has not been growing at the same rate the lottery has been growing at. So, that is unfortunate for us that we're not receiving what I think would be our fair share in lottery aid. And we look at local receipts. These are fines and fees and building permits, but our most, or our largest local receipt is motor vehicle excise tax. And we have done well in motor vehicle excise tax year after year. But we look at our first commitment, which is probably when most of you receive your motor vehicle excise bill in February, and that's how we make our estimate for the coming year. In February, our commitment was up by 5.52%, which is very healthy. Right now, I'm projecting an increase of 2% for fiscal 2015. Each additional 1% would bring in about $14,000. And then our second item of note is the local options meals tax, which we approved back in January 2010. That brings about $68,000 per year. And that debt has been very strong and has helped our budget in the last several years. Lastly, 5% of our budget comes from available funds. In this category, we account for the school building assistance reimbursement that we receive for the primary school. The money that comes from the water and sewer veteran consti, the associated debt service. The prior year unexpended articles for capital, we account here. And that money we just appropriated in the last article for the stabilization fund, three caches accounted for here. So, in total, in fiscal 2015, we are projecting that our revenues will increase $888,944 or 2.81%. In terms of expenditures, obviously, we are a service provider organization, and our demand for service doesn't necessarily follow our ability to pay for those services. We appropriate our budget by functional category, which is what we went through in the blue sheet. We also have non-appropriated costs that we have to account for. We have charges that the state levies upon us for services that they provide to the town that we have to account for. And then in later articles, we have our enterprise funds. And then we have to account for any other articles that have a financial impact. So, I wanted to take a minute to talk about the target level budget because there was some discussion and perhaps some misunderstanding of target budget. But what happened was, when the budgets came in and I had a chance to look at revenues again, I found that we could fund $116,000 more than target. And I think this, people started talking about this as surplus. And I just wanted to make sure. It was surplus only in the sense that it was surplus above target. And as I mentioned before, target is what we can afford, not necessarily what we need. So, essentially, four departments submitted above-target requests. One of our public schools: $558,250. Police: $209,500. Fire department: $228,000. DPW: $818,155 above target. To go through our expenditures, we have three categories of expenditures. We have nondiscretionary, what I call less discretionary, and then we have discretionary. Nondiscretionary expenditures are 23.4% of our budget. These are things that we have to pay for. There's no discretion. Debt service, insurances, retirement assessment, and those state charges. Those have to be paid for regardless of anything else. And then we get into a category that I've identified as less discretionary. That's 61.29% of our budget. And these are services that we are, yeah, some level of requirement to offer to the town. Obviously, education, we are required to provide education. Public safety, police, fire, we have requirements there. And DPW, some of what we do in DPW is required. We have to keep our roads open. Then we get down to discretionary. These are things that we make choices locally, whether we want to have them or not, or at what level we want to provide them. So, in this budget, that's $33 million, and the spending we do annually, that's about $33 million. Less than 5% of it is discretionary. And that's why it makes it so difficult for us to go through the budget and to make decisions about funding levels. So, debt service for fiscal 15, in total appropriation, is 2.978 million dollars for debt service. So, just over a million dollars comes in additional taxes through voter-approved debt exclusions. We have $770,000 of that that comes in the form of sewer veterans. About $63,000 that comes in the form of water veterans. $11,000 for skeptic receipts, a small bond premium. And then a significant reimbursement from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and then the amount of $531,000. So, of that 2.978 million dollar budget for debt service, $554,763 actually comes from the operating budget. In terms of insurances, we have our health insurance renewal. For fiscal 2015, you receive a 0% renewal. This is one of the reasons that we were able to fund target-level budgets, even though we started with a deficit, a projected deficit. The town will actually spend less in health insurance in fiscal 2015 than we did in 2012. And that is very, very significant. And I can't thank the Board of Selectmen and our public employees to any amount for the hard work that they do in negotiating health insurance, sitting down at the table, coming up with alternatives and different strategies to help us reduce our health insurance costs. Because I'm not sure there is any other community in the state of Massachusetts that can say that they're paying less in health insurance in the coming year than they did three years ago. We also received a 0% increase in our general liabilities and workers' comp insurances. And here, the reason we received 0% increase is because of the hard work that all of our department heads do. In particular, with general liability insurance, the work that John Lana does for facilities for the school, and the work that Jeff Grobman and Jimmy Broly do for facilities on behalf of the town. They all undertake a number of activities during the fiscal year which reduce our risk and also return a percentage of our premium that we pay back to the town. So, I'd like to offer my appreciation to those three individuals for the work that they do. Our retirement assessment, on the other hand, is something that is difficult for us to absorb this year. We received an assessment increased 14.6% or about $106,000, significantly higher than what we have seen in the past. And it has to do with the final year of phasing of a new actuarial evaluation method, plus the cost of one early retirement. So, that was a big hit to our budget this year. In terms of education, our Monty Tech Assessment represents only a 0.3% increase in fiscal 15 over 14. One of our public schools, the superintendent recommended a budget to the school committee of $17,245,681. I was only able to recommend a budget of $16,754,663, which is about a 3.9% increase because of the lack of funding available. And at this time, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask the superintendent to use another few minutes to talk about the impact on her budget as a result of the recent budget change.
Ms. Collins.
Mr. Moderator. I'd like to begin by just giving a few of the number of students that we have in our district and represent their new studio. Currently, there's approximately 1,600 students that are in our public schools here in the center from pre-k through fourth grade. We have a lot of information at our website, and I encourage you to go there at any time to see more specific details. But overall, we have about 500 students that attend Leonardburg Primary School, another 500 that are Turkeyville Middle School, and 600 students at Leonardburg High School and that sort of students in grades 12. Over the last several years, our enrollment has decreased. Part of that decrease, it's a decrease of 142, however, 67 of those students have decreased because of the regionalization variance. So, those students that are from Shirley, there were 67 of them that used to come to our schools that no longer do. And as a result of also the declining population in terms of just the number of younger students, we have also, over the past nine years, decreased by one section at each grade level, starting at the kindergarten grade level. And we've gone from six sections to five sections. And so, that's how the district has approached of the lower population. You see currently that we have 199.5 employees in the district. I gave you the breakdown of how those are distributed relative to job title. Our class sizes have increased as a result of the decrease in the number of classroom sections. Overall, they've increased four to five students in each classroom over time. And you can see the average class sizes there at each one of the levels as well. We've seen a significant increase in our students who are English language learners, or English proficiency is lower for them. It's limited, but they have gone from eight of the students requiring those kinds of services to twenty-seven. Also, students with disabilities have remained fairly stable in terms of the number. That's about 16% of the population. However, what we have seen there is the intensity of the needs of the specialized services that these students may require has increased. And two point, programs that are referred to as substantially separate programs for students with disabilities, we've seen an increase of over 30% in the total numbers of students, going from 34 to 44 students in those programs district-wide. And also, our out-of-district placement, students that require services beyond what we are able to provide here, their specialized needs that require an outside placement. And that number has gone from 13 to 27. And also, we are seeing more students who are in need of some specialized tutoring support through the Title I program. And the numbers there have increased from 40 to 71. The good news is that due to the dedication of our staff, these wonderful children that you send us, the partnership that we have with parents and the PTO, who work so hard on our behalf. During the same time, student performance has remained high, and the students have been challenged academically. They've been provided creative outlets through the arts. We've identified ways that they can continue to expand and benefit from our wellness program. And for a district whose size, we certainly have a broad variety of athletics and other curricular activities that students are able to afford, participate in. And that's really a direct result of the commitment of a very dedicated and talented staff, as well as the students who are being part of these very important activities. Student engagement is an important aspect of the overall school culture and environment here. So, students are engaged, encouraged, supported, and cared for within the Leonardburg Public Schools, and we take a lot of pride in those. So, this gets a summary of the town manager. Already recorded what the recommended budget was and the reductions, what we've been able to do over the past of the last month. Our budget begins being developed in October, is when our principals and other department heads within the school department start making presentations. And our budget is built upon the needs of the students and the numbers of students, but also specific goals that are set out by school councils as well as the school committee. So, the budget that was presented was based upon the resources necessary in order to achieve goals as well as serve the particular needs of the council. At this point in time, you can see that we are anticipating a 2% increase in the personnel side of the budget. We have reduced that side over the course of time, these last several months, knowing there was this gap over $300,000. We have also reduced the non-personnel or the expense side of the budget in the amount of $250,000. So, that was largest increase percentage-wise. You can see that the non-personnel portion of the budget increased 9%. And overall, our budget at this point, having made the reductions that we've made, represents a 4% increase for the school budget for this year, is what's being recommended. I do need to point out, for those of you with your calculators, either in your hand or on your hand, that this budget that you're seeing here still represents a gap of $27,000 less than where we are right now with the town manager's budget and the budget that was recommended in this article. At the beginning of the week, that was $70,000. And the administrative team and all the teachers have worked with us to reduce that, and at this time, this $27,000 gap continues to remain. So, overall, in this budget, the total increase for our... So overall, in this budget, the total increase for personnel was sitting at $224,000, $225,000 approximately. 144 of that is directly related to some required changes that we need in terms of personnel to make available to our students who are limited to English proficiency, the teachers who have particular expertise in terms of instruction for those students. We also have a need to add back into the budget three care professionals that serve students with disabilities. Those positions were not filled last year. We are required to provide services to students with disabilities. And this year, the recommendation from the principals was that we definitely needed those additional care professionals. It's one in each building in order to meet the needs of the services that are required for students on their individualized education plans. The impact of being able to do that at those positions is that we are reducing three teaching positions that would be required. And the positions that are recommended are areas where we're seeing retirements at this time, in physical education, English language arts at the high school, as well as a foreign language position. And you notice that I asked for that foreign language position. At this point in time, we continue to work. We're just in or in the registration. Of course, we're in the process at the high school. Mr. Statafido, who's our high school principal, is very concerned about being able to make sure that we provide the appropriate number of foreign language classes to our students with that reduction of the foreign language teacher. We also can hope with that position to begin to expand foreign language back into the middle school or even the primary school, depending on how the schedule will work. So when we move into the new program, we build back in that middle school foreign language program that was such a strong program for us for so many years, but it's been limited to just eighth-grade offerings at this point in time. So I want to stress that the foreign language position is a very important position for us. It's up there because of the retirement, and we always try to look at how we can make reductions through attrition. I don't know that that's going to be possible at the end of the day, and that's why I put that caveat there. But the overall impact in terms of this, the good news is that we're getting the supports for the students that have some additional needs that we are currently going unfilled and that we need to make sure that we provide. That's usually for students who are English language learners. It's a number of hours of direct instruction from a particular specialized teacher every week. And we need to provide that evidence and logs of that particular contact to the state in order to establish that. We recently had a program review from the state, and that was one of the areas that we were found noncompliant, and we need to address that, and that's why I think this subject can be addressed in this fashion. And remember, the increase that we've seen in students there from 8 to 27. Class sizes will continue to increase as a result of this. This presents reduced educational opportunities for our students, as well as reduced offerings in the elective areas and for the pay in particular. We continue to have some very significant core scheduling restrictions as a result of reductions. If you have a high school student or have a high school student, we have a lot of single-class classes. That means it's only offered once at Leonardburg High School. And so it's a very complex and tricky scheduling process in order to make sure that we're able to provide that nice array of classes for students and build it into their schedules. As our options in terms of personnel become restricted, then that scheduling becomes even more difficult. And at times, students have just simply had to not be able to take a high-priority class or a class that they would have benefited from certainly because they had just been fitted into their schedule across the school year or even three years, four years, that they've been trying to fit it into their schedule. So we'd like to keep that restrictedness from growing even greater than what it is. And with the English language arts and foreign language position being lost, that is in essence what is going to happen there. Also, there was a maintenance, additional maintenance position. It was actually a restoration of a maintenance position that was in the budget, and that's been removed at that. At this time, we have one maintenance person. The continued operation of the school district with one maintenance person is of really great concern to us. Preventative maintenance continues to be done, but impacts the timeliness of the maintenance repairs or unscheduled work. Mr. Lana has been working with the staff as well as the students from Monty, Mount Waukesha, which is a vocational technical high school, to help with some of the needs, but those are generally only work that is in an emergency type. And we have continued definitely to make sure we prioritize the primary school and Turkey Hill Middle School in the maintenance program. And the high school, however, is a little limiting. We fear a stair with the building coming online to those that have significant impacts upon the educational program. And so those are typically, as you saw this during the roof repair, is heating and ventilation repairs, and of course, fire and safety items. Part of what we're going to be doing over the next couple of years as well is the work that's going to need to be done in order to provide for the transition to the new middle school and high school. With the shortage of staff that are going, that we're not in this area right now, it's not moving as fast as we would like it to be. The concern would be that that would add to the cost of the project, because we'll have to move it in at that point in time. So generally, what we're trying to do is do as much as hauling of the materials and starting to move out a lot of the products that will not need to be moved to the high school and just make sure that we're well-positioned logistically for that move to the new high school when it happens. And finally, then on the non-personnel side of the budget, you see that the total increase there was the most significant increase in terms of this budget. It was in the non-personnel that was driving the budget, that are increases in this non-personnel side. And that is totally related to some changes in out-of-district placements. Those of the increased number there, as I said, that has over the years gone from 13 to 27 students now. Those are the tuitions that we are required to pay. At this point in time, of that total increase, 416,000 of that is related to those out-of-district placements. And then transportation associated with transportation to those placements as well. So we have a level-funded, basically, or less than level-funded budget in the areas of the other resources, our textbooks, as well as other instructional materials and supplies as a result of that. We're working really on a very austere budget. We have been for the last five years. Very limited material resources. Certainly, this is an area that parents have supplemented heavily, as well as the assistance from the PTO and some fundraise efforts even on the part of our students within the high school. There's assist their tours. So that's an overview at this point in time of the school budget, and there we set. And so there's this $27,000 gap that remains.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Always plenty of information. Thank you. So there's a hole on school. Let me get back to you, but there's a hole on schools. Am I listening correctly? I think you said, yeah. What's the gap, $27,000? $27,000 gap from, after all the efforts of everyone involved, that's what is a hole on schools, right? Okay, just right out. Back to you.
And I will move quickly through the rest of the budget recommendation. In terms of the police department, the recommendation is for a level-funded budget, 14 full-time officers and 15 reserves. We have two patrols on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, plus weekly on traffic and one for the outreach, which will give us three patrols on certain times of the day and week. The above-target request, as I mentioned, to the police department is for funding three additional full-time police officers and some additional funding for a front desk officer. This recommendation or above-target request was not included in my recommendation due to funding constraints. The police department is looking at new opportunities in terms of additional regionalized services and new revenue in terms of towing fees and local traffic fines. Those will be investigated over the next several months, and hopefully, we will be able to make use, to implement those in the future, to provide some additional funding for our police department. Our fire department, we have coverage 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday, Friday, plus some holiday weekends. Our response times remain a concern, but they are the best that we can provide with the current staffing levels. The police department, excuse me, the fire department and ambulance is on man during the week, overnight, and on weekends, with the exception of the holiday weekends. One thing that I think is important is the National Fire Protection Association and the American Heart Association recommend that public safety personnel be on scene within four minutes. That significantly improves the chances of a person's survival if the call is for a heart attack. Obviously, if that happens overnight during the week or on the weekends, it's also difficult for personnel to respond whether or not even in the station. The fire chief did submit an above-target request for $228,000. That would provide some on-call or some level of coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for two on-call personnel to be in the station so that we could get out either with a fire truck or an ambulance and have a better response rate. That is not included in this recommendation in the level of funding. The fire department is looking at increasing ambulance fees, which may provide some additional funding for the department. That is something that we will be looking at over the next several months. In terms of dispatch, we transitioned to regional dispatch on July 1st of 2013. That meant that we lost our 24/7 coverage in the public safety building, but we are backfilling that eight to 12 hours per day with a police officer. And that has been of great benefit because that police officer that's at the desk can also monitor lockup if we have somebody in lockup. Previously, if we had somebody in lockup, the dispatch personnel were not able to monitor lockup because we have to have a uniform patrol officer to fill that function. So that person, eight to 12 hours per day, was double duty if we have somebody in lockup. Our assessment for the regional dispatch district for 15 is the same as fiscal 14, so no increase. We actually are projecting a decrease in that assessment in fiscal 16 and going forward because we will be in a position to bring a fifth community into that regional dispatch district in fiscal 16. And we have, at this time, two to four communities that are interested in coming to the regional dispatch district. So with each of the departments, I just wanted to take an opportunity to highlight some of the initiatives that we're looking at. We are looking at a regional lockup facility. We received a grant through our regional planning agency to investigate the feasibility of having a regional lockup facility. Ideally, it would be wonderful if we could offer that here in Leonardburg because we do have the space. We have an excellent facility, and it would be nice if other communities would pay us to monitor detainees that they, that they have. We are looking at implementing a towing contract service policy agreement that the town would participate in revenue sharing for any towing that is done within the town on behalf of the police department. We are in the process of implementing a K-9 program, which will allow us to be less reliant on state police when we need to have a K-9 unit to assist in different police activities. We are in the process of reviewing current bylaws and updating them in terms of fines for traffic infractions, which we expect to bring, as the result will be to bring additional revenue into the community. We are implementing a train-to-trainer program so we don't have to send our officers out for some training. And as I mentioned, we are looking at increasing ambulance fees to bring them in line to cover the cost of providing service. In terms of the Department of Public Works, essentially, a level service budget recommendation, increasing the snow and ice appropriation from $250,000, $500,000 to $260,000. And we'll talk about that more in a minute. In the budget, there is, in the original budget, a recommendation for $128,000 of funding to add to our Chapter 90 funding for roadways. Chapter 90 funding is what we receive from the state to maintain our roads. And we receive about $422,000 a year, so this was an additional $128,000 of dollars to supplement that. Because if you've been to town meetings before or watched Board of Selectmen meetings, you've probably heard us talk about the condition of the roads and our pavement management plan. And the fact that in order to maintain roads at a reasonable level, we need about $1 million to $1,200,000 per year. And for the last several years, we've been spending essentially only our Chapter 90 money, which has been between $350,000 and $450,000 a year. So in the current year, fiscal 14, we have an additional $107,000 in the budget. In 15, increasing that to $128,000. And that $116,000 surplus of about $116,000 that we talked about the above-target available funding, the recommendation was to put up about $113,000 towards roads. And actually, $2,500 is what we're using to finance the interest costs on the lane traffic in fiscal 15. And the reason the recommendation was made to put that money here rather than into the school department or the police department or the fire department is that both the finance committee and Board of Selectmen have felt that that money was only available in fiscal 15 or is only projected to be available in fiscal 15 because we had a 0% increase in health insurance. Nobody is seeing a 0% increase in health insurance, and we can't assume going forward that we're going to have a 0% increase in health insurance. We spend about $4 million per year between the town and the school for health insurance. So any percentage increase on $4 million is significant. And if we increase operating expenses because of this, what is perceived to be one-time savings that are just causing or building a deficit going forward. So that was the reason that the recommendation was made for the money there. As I mentioned, DPW put in an above-target request of just over $800,000. And that was to implement this pavement management plan to maintain our roads at a much better level than we've been maintaining. That was only partially funded due to the lack of labor. So just a minute on our snow and ice account. There are only a few accounts that we are able to legally overspend. Snow and ice is one of those. So we have to budget a certain amount each year, but what we budget is never exactly what we spend. And in this graph, this shows 10 years' history of what we spent on snow and ice, which is represented by the blue line, which may look black. The actual expenditures are in that pink line above that. So any of the space in between those two lines is what is our snow and ice deficit. And that deficit needs to be made up. We can carry that forward, but it needs to be made up within the levy limit. So what we try to do each year is if we project a deficit or if we have a deficit, we try to account for that in the current fiscal year so we're not shortchanging next year's budget. And that's a large chunk of what we did in the fiscal 14 budget adjustment article, which I believe was Article 9. So in terms of initiatives in the Department of Public Works, we have fully implemented a modern fleet management software program. We've implemented a system of planning, tracking, and recording daily work to easily demonstrate departmental workload and need for additional funding. We continue to evaluate all roadways in need of maintenance and determine whether or not grant funding is available. If you watched this week's Selectmen's meeting, you've heard a very extensive presentation by our DPW director and our engineer on the updates we're looking to make to the pavement management plan going forward. In terms of facilities, we used to account for In terms of facilities, we used to account for these as part of the Department of Public Works. We separated that out and created a different department which is still managed by the DPW director. But we did this so that we could have more central oversight, particularly of the challenges, so we could have a more coordinated effort of maintenance of buildings. Some of the initiatives we're looking at here, working with our Green Community Task Force to put out a request for proposals or performance contracting to determine whether or not there are additional energy efficiency opportunities within any of our buildings. Several of the buildings that we operate in are very old. They are indeed some repair or modernization. Now that we are a green community, there are grant funds that are available to us. And our Green Communities Task Force has done a great job in identifying projects where we contain grant funding to come up with some additions. Also, we're still looking at purchasing our streetlights. We have the opportunity to do this. We need to find another consultant, which I think in the last couple of weeks, I think I have identified somebody who will work with us. But we have an opportunity to purchase our streetlights at a significant savings over what we're paying right now. And the solar projects that we've been talking about for years now, the two solar projects are currently, finally, under construction. And the one that will benefit the town through net metering credits should be coming online, hopefully by the beginning of June. And then we expect to see about $100,000 savings in the utility costs going forward. But we haven't accounted for 100% of that within this budget in 15 because the projects haven't come online. So they are delayed because of anything. We didn't want to be programming all of that money in this budget. In terms of the library, all we're doing here is maintaining our minimum appropriation requirement of $361,192. Most of that comes from the general fund, but a small amount of just under $8,000 will come from the revolving fund. And then our last category, administration and land use offices, we're looking at having the same staffing levels in 15 with one exception. We're looking to try to recapture one of the cuts that we've made in the past in terms of information technology. Right now, we have 1.5 full-time equivalents in information technology to manage all our infrastructure, technology infrastructure across the board. That's both for the schools and for all of the other town departments. We're looking to increase that to 2.25. In fiscal 12, we had 2.5. So we're trying to get back to that because obviously the more efficient we can be in the technology, the better we can be in the law. One small change in the Selectmen's office, we will be proposing to replace the administrative assistant with an assistant to the town manager, just a slightly higher level position, to make up for the cut that we made back in fiscal 2012, where we actually had three people in that office, and now we're down to 1.8. And then replacing the planning director with the land use director, which I will talk about further in the next article. And then finally, in recycling and solid waste, no increases here. And then in conclusion, we are essentially, with the exception of the schools department, maintaining level services in 15 at the same level as 14, which is reduced over where we were in fiscal 12. This is a balanced budget proposal in that we are funding the budget with use of recurring revenues, not using any stabilization fund or to attach. So we're not creating any type of functional deficit going forward with this budget.
Thank you, Ms. Fidel. Again, I want to make a pitch for the Finance Committee, which is projecting to have a comfortable opening, sort of, committee working for the town manager. If you're wondering how you do that, there is a talent bank form, it is online, and our website, you can click it out, fill it out, mail it in, let us call Town Hall, speak to the town manager, invite him. Okay, we have a whole odd schools, so I assume we're going to talk about the school budget. If you're going to, first up, the only person who's wanting to discuss or debate any articles so hard is Ms. Benson.
Brent Benson, Kenton, Ohio. So I think I would like to suggest, so the reason that I heard that the $27,000 was going to go into the roads and pavement program instead of the schools was because of the lack of ongoing funding to pay for that in the coming year so we don't want to build an operational deficit. But I just heard that because of the solar project is supposed to come online, that we're expecting $100,000 per year in energy savings on an ongoing basis, which could provide the funding for that $27,000 each year going forward. So I'd like to propose that we take the funding, the $27,000 the school needs out of the plate, or to put in the roads project, and move that out of the school.
Okay, so I heard that as a proposal, which in our language we say amendment.
I'd like to amend. I'm not sure which I have to amend in order to affect that change.
What you would do, this sheet at the bottom, WP at the microphone, is you would move to make amendment to, and you tell us the line item, which must be 79, and you would suggest that $27,000 suck from along those lines, and then tell us where you propose to come. But before we do that, you're the first one to get up, and that's when you can start up. Let's, let's, let's you save that for a moment, and let's have some discussion about that with your side out, and anybody else is going to get up and talk about school. But I appreciate that you made it, and I'm not going to take any action on it just at this moment. Just stay right at your bottom, okay? So Ms. Fidel, you want to address the issue that Mr. Benson brought up about, could he take the money, he wants to increase schools by $27,000? And if I heard it correctly, you're talking about because solar is going to come online, could he find the $27,000 again? Is that correct, Mr. Benson?
Yeah, okay, I'll stay. So the idea would be that the ongoing funding to the solar savings, but current funding for this year would come from that spot in the building, I mean, in the roads where you said that they couldn't, we didn't want to, the Selectmen decided that we should take that $27,000 that went into the roads project, and we shouldn't use that at the school part because we didn't have ongoing revenue. So I'm not sure exactly which line item comes under, under the DPW proposal, but I'd like to propose that we move that $27,000 from that DPW line over to the school because we have ongoing funding to come online.
Okay, stay at the microphone, let Ms. Fidel talk to you about solar money and road
So what Mr. Benson would like to do is move $27,000 from line 61 to line 79.
Well, maybe I'm the one who's mostly confused. I thought Mr. Benson, the part one, was talking about money, because solar's going to come online in June.
That was just the rationale behind it, that's not the funding source. The funding source, I think Ms. Fidel had to correct in the sense that I wanted to do it from the DPW, and I'm using the rationale for why we have ongoing source of that one for that.
Okay, so that's just rationale. So your amendment, when we take it, assuming we will take it, is going to be to move 61, line 61 to line 79, taking money out of roads and putting it in the school. Okay, Ms. Fidel, let Brent have it. Okay, Ms. Fidel, let Brent.
Well, what do you want me to say?
It's too. No, you have to do a lot.
I think what Mr. Benson has asked, and certainly some members of the board want to know, is his rationale is that solar was going to come online and would be able to cover the recurring cost of the $27,000 in further years, just not this fiscal year. I think what he may have been expecting, and certainly members of the board would like to hear from the town manager, is his assumption that what he here, is that true? I mean, are we looking at money in further years from solar that is not allocated in the current budget?
So the, as I mentioned, the solar project that will benefit the town of Lumbur is currently under construction, anticipated to come online June 1st and at full production, which should happen shortly after it comes online, is anticipated to bring in about $100,000 in savings to the town going forward. It's not online right now. I have every reason to believe that it's online, but it will go online. But I was not comfortable because it's taken us three years to get to this point to assume that that funding would be available in fiscal 15. I hope that the project would come online sooner so that we would be able to use that money in 15, but that's the reason it's not in the budget because of the uncertainty, however small it may be at this point in time.
Okay, sir, you're at the microphone. What would you like to tell us? Give us your name, give me where you live.
I'm Ethan Lockwood, 91, Winture, Lumbur. Yeah, mine is really a question, you know, congratulations, thank you, and congratulations to Barry and all involved for bringing together another balanced budget together. I really appreciate that. Just, I just educate myself so I understand the budget a little better. My question is about retirement pension obligations of the town, and I'm looking at the white sheet here, fixed revenues, expenditures, and I see one section which, you know, seems to pretty clearly relate to that, which is the WISPER City Retirement Assessment, which is about $800,000. Just, you know, to help me understand the question a little, does that represent really the entirety of our sort of retirement pension obligations? Or are there other things, for example, in the, either in the health insurance line items or in the school budget or other places, which represent similar such costs in the town as, you know, participating in overtime?
So that line, WISPER Regional Retirement System, represents 100% to town's assessment, town-related retirement costs for employees. The only other thing that is not included is any retiree health insurance costs for the town. Those are accounted for in the health insurance line, whether they're retired school employees or retired town employees, that's part of the general government unclassified health insurance line.
Thank you very much. Just, just out of curiosity, like, what percentage of that line would you say is retirement protected employees?
The, it's about three to one. So we have three, no, no, three retirees for every employee.
Thanks very much.
Ms. Bertrand.
I just want to mention something relative to roads. As Tommy pointed out, there was extensive presentation of fires, DPW director, at the Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday night, and there are a number of projects on the table right now that are very important to the town of Lumbur. One of them being the reconstruction of Summer Street. And currently, the, there's a process by which we get federal funding, and a member of the organization is the one who's planning for the coordination and representing. Right now, the reconstruction of Summer Street is slated for the fiscal 2017 tip. Because initially, the money for engineering was approved in the transportation for on bill, so we were only given money for the design through that process. Unfortunately, the governor has not released those funds. So in order to maintain our place in the tip, which is over $6 million funding that we are, that we are currently slated for, we need to move this project forward. I had a very lengthy meeting yesterday with Brad Harris, who is the Transportation Director for Monjuza Regional Planning Commission. And because there is a question as to whether or not we are going to be able to finalize Summer Street, they are already considering the possibility of moving us out to 2018. My concern is, is if we don't continue to move aggressively on this project and meet specific deadlines, we could potentially fall off with the tip. After meeting with him yesterday and explaining that we are looking to put more money into our pavement management program, we actually are looking to allocate an additional $100,000 to pavement management at our town meeting, which is today. We're also looking at other avenues for funding, and really, largely, hard that we are moving forward as a community, and we are recognizing that pavement management is important. We agreed to look at moving a different project out and putting this back in the fiscal 17 tip. I just want people to be aware, when we start looking at roadways, yes, it's a place to take money, but as you all know, our roads are deteriorating at a rate, at a rapid rate in this community. And if we don't continue to maintain them and repair them, we'll lose millions of dollars in infrastructure, and we are going to be hard pressed to get it back.
Robert Bowen, 1686 Massachusetts Avenue. I'm not opposed to the motion that I think we might be about here to amend the budget, but I just wondered if any consideration has been given by the Capital Planning Committee or the Finance Committee borrowing for an additional vehicle under the capital plan as a way to close this gap? There are several vehicles in the $30,000 range, and if we borrow for one of those, that could close this gap.
Ericsson, if you could address that from the, the.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Moderator. We have not specifically talked about additional borrowing, beyond the borrowing that we've already put in the budget to fund the fire department. So no, we have not had that discussion. We were only advised of this remaining gap of $27,000 within the last two days, so we have not entered into any discussion of the need to come to close this gap with the school department. I would like to say, though, that we've had significant discussion about the deficits that we have, and the town manager pointed out that we have $558,000 in above-target requests for the schools. We also have $818,000 in above-target requests from DPW. And if you look at our total net revenue increase, it's $881,000. We're already taking 72% of that and applying it to the school budget to help close this gap. For the single largest department in town to get a budget increase of 3.9%, when total revenues are increasing by 2.8%, that means every other department in town needs to pay their cotton. We don't think that's appropriate.
Anybody here? You could be here longer if you'd like to. Does anybody here from Capital that would like to address the reports?
Mr. Moderator, I would agree with Ms. Erickson. We did not consider borrowing for anything other than the large fire truck acquisition. Had no reason to at the time we deliberated, and just got mad about this particular gap we had seen in the last two years.
And I'm going to ask DUCON and Selectmen to weigh in on what I think is going to be Mr. Benson, Benson, he might want to start a conversation with him. Mr. Matt.
I just want to add to what Mr. Bowen said. The Capital Planning Committee has long had a policy not to borrow less than $100,000 purchases, so that would get back. I've got more to say, but I'm happy to get to Mr. Bowen.
I just want to say also that we looked at different categories of expenditures in capital planning, and every now and then, every year, every few years, you face one of these very large projects, and obviously, the fire mentioned, this year was one of those. But it's also a slippery slope to then just start financing everything wherever it comes along. And we felt in the Capital Planning Committee, and I hope I can speak to the Finance Committee as well, that it really needs to be an unusual reason for us to finance specific things within the capital plan. The next thing you know, instead of paying cash like we have been for most of the projects, we end up financing year after year after year, and we just increase the town's debt. So I, just speaking as a citizen and also as a member of Capital Planning and FIDCON, I think we need to avoid that slippery slope. Thank you.
Sir?
Ms. Keeling was before me, but I.
Oh, listen, ladies first, not like you were up first. Hillary, please.
And very much, Mr. Bertrand. Mr. Moderator, I'm Hillary Keeling, Sunny Hill Road. My, through you, I'd like to seek clarification from the town manager or from Mrs. Bertrand about the issue that she just discussed around the Summer Street project and the relevance of that to the $27,000 figure. and the relevance of that to the twenty-seven thousand dollar figure. There is a larger sum than the twenty-seven thousand dollars to be added to the road's budget. It sounds as if you were implying, Mrs. Bertrand, that to shift twenty-seven thousand dollars would put that project in jeopardy. Is that correct?
What I was trying to explain is that the DPW director gave us a presentation on Tuesday night as to, right now, he's looking at approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue for road repair projects. And the outline, and this has not yet been approved by the selectmen, so I want to be very clear that this is still up for discussion. But in that presentation, the outline, potentially three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for engineering for Summer Street, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering for Chase Road, which is also being considered for incorporation into the tip, which is a two point two million dollar project. And then allocated a portion of sixty-three thousand dollars, which we received from the state for a winter back recovery program. So that comes to us, if we allocate all of those funds, that leaves three hundred and four thousand dollars available. What you're initially proposing, again, this is not going to approve. You're looking at the paving of White Street from the Pittsburgh Line to Two A, and then Goodrich Street from Reservoir Road to Winter Hill Road. And then that leaves approximately eleven thousand dollars for grassing. So when we take, so when we take money from roads, we have to understand that we are impacting potentially some of those projects. And what, how that's going to be done, I don't know. But that's going, the presentation right now is to enter some of this money into specific projects.
Thank you. May I, may I ask another question?
Sure.
Because I don't, I don't understand a lot about the Summer Street project, I would like to ask if that project has the potential for, either through supporting business or whatever, so it has the potential for increasing revenues to the town? Because we clearly have a revenue shortage and expense overload, and we will in the future, so that's...
Part of the Summer Street project is economic revitalization. Because obviously, improving the roadway, improving the range structure is obviously important. But in addition, we're looking at creating green lanes. We're looking at revitalizing that area of town, which is, it is our hope and our expectation that that will bring an economic revitalization component. And then we can actively start to rent market some of those areas for...
Thank you.
I'm Greg Worth. I'm at the Teny Forum Mass Ave, and I'm chairman of the school committee. I wanted to give a little bit of context behind the discussion that we're currently having and address the fact that this is heartbreaking information. And so the way the budget process works is the superintendent puts together a recommended budget in January, which she presented in the first school committee meeting in January. The deficit against the town manager's recommendation at that time was about a half million dollars. But as we all know, our understanding of future expenses changes every day. So between the time that, between January and today, our prediction of expenses for next year has gone up by over two hundred thousand dollars each of mandatory expenditures. So I want to make clear, these are not discretionary things. These are state federally mandated expenditures that the town as a whole is obligated to fund. And so since January, Mrs. Kong, the school committee and the administration have been working. We started trying to close a half million dollar budget. Now we're closing about three quarters of a million dollar budget gap. The way we have to do that, because this is a zero sum game, is by reducing opportunities. We're increasing class size, as you can see from the presentation Miss Kong's put together. We're reducing teachers, we're reducing services, we're pitching pennies every which we are willing possibly can. And we would much prefer to have come today and been able to say that, yes, we can. We're going to pay a price, we're going to reduce opportunity, but we're going to fit within the superpendence that the town manager's recommended budget. Unfortunately, working even over this past week, we managed to reduce the deficit by about seventy thousand dollars. But I think we're at the end of the road. And so that's why this remaining discrepancy exists. We've been very open about this. The FIDCON received a briefing a few weeks ago where we had seventy thousand dollar gap. At the school committee budget hearing, which was also a couple of weeks ago, that seventy thousand dollar gap is still there, and we've been working to close it. So I appreciate Mr. Benson for moving party's recommendation to put twenty-seven thousand dollars into the school budget. And I will, of course, support that. If we don't do that, the superintendent will, of course, as we're obligated to, find a way to close that gap. The only remaining opportunity for us are to continue to increase class size and take some risk in the future. We'll do what the community requires, but from my perspective, what the moving party has laid out is moving risk. So right now, there is a risk that the solo project will not be available on July first. And so the town manager has not asked for appropriated that funding. And there's a risk, there's a chance that it will become available. If that funding becomes available, in the fall, we could have a town meeting and fix the school budget. Or we could fix the road budget. The question is, who will take the risk that that funding will not become available? I think there's substantial amount of risk in the school budget at this moment. And the school committee will have to act with whatever this appropriation is effectively immediate. Because we're working, our school year starts July first. So from my perspective, from a risk management perspective, I would prefer to see moving some of that risk into the project.
Thank you. Use it to my ears, because there might be another meeting.
I'm John, Mr. Bertrand, I bring to you Mr. Garrett down in Longford. Last couple of life cycles, the discussion gets to be more and more of us. As we look back, you know, twenty plus years ago, we deferred investment for a year or two years to the point where we don't, there was almost none in the state of the state. And that's something we've got to deal with. Also, remind us, a couple of years ago, we had an over exercise. Can you hear me? It's just me. So a couple of years ago, we had an over exercise, which was driven very much around what you see today between the targets budgeting and the actual question of the department. And I know it's been a couple of years, so the revisionist story has kind of looked back and said, well, geez, they were after the money, if we didn't get it, we were going to collapse and die, and the road was going to go away, which is really not the case. Very clearly, the discussion was, we can do better. We can improve our roads, we can improve public safety, we can improve or maintain education. But it wasn't the county in our, and I guess it was a lot of money. So our guidance a couple of years ago at the election was to live within available funds. So that's what we need to do. And I hate to see the schools put at greater risk, but we've got to start moving on our roads. And we've got to start working through, as the finance chair pointed out, the great majority of available funds, traditional funds are going to the schools. So if there's more risk to be taken in open choice lots, I think that's what we got to do. We got to take the risk. And we need to try to manage the risk as much as we can. We've got to live within available funds, because that's what we're told by the voters to do outside of here. We're not collapsing, remember, not collapsing. We're making do what we got. That's the answer to that. So I would recommend that we keep things as they are. The money comes in the fall, we'll deal with that.
I'm Articik for Longwood Drive. I have a number of questions, but I'll address the anticipated amendment. We're talking about twenty-seven thousand dollars for the school. We've already cut back tremendous amount on the school. As you saw in the note, we run out of supplies very early, and we expect town people to contribute supplies, because we just don't have it by the time we get saved in the middle of the year. Mrs. Bertrand made the comment that road projects are very important, very critical to us. We have to get moving on the road projects. Well, my contention is that it's a lot more important for us to put money into the school system so that we can keep our children educated. Now, I'm well beyond the age that I did in the school system, so I don't have a vested interest. But I think it's important for us to keep the schools where they need to be so that we can maintain the credibility. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have endangered our ability to keep our accreditation for schools. So I believe that taking the risk is better in the road construction than with regard to the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Ebersol, if you may.
One of the things that I would disagree with the town manager on is listing public roads under the discretionary component. State law requires us to make all roads reasonably safe for the public. There's a specific statute. If somebody has a defect, excuse me, hits a pothole, they can come after it, claim it against the town. The pavement management program, as presented the other night, does not address a lot of the failed roads within the next few years. So they will continue to get worse and worse. Over the years, in tough times, the town has stock funded capital. They then would move that money to operational or non-operational. The capital planning process we have now has come a long way to pay as you go and only borrow from the items that we need to, that are very large. But we still have not added in the pavement management plan into the capital planning process. And that, while this seems to be a little bit of money, twenty-seven thousand dollars, next year, that would be in the base. And we were looking at health insurance costs, other insurance costs that we'll have to predict. So I would be opposed to moving this from the road, and we have to start fixing our roads.
And we have, we have an issue, if you will, with the state and safety of our roads. The first question, what's the criteria for road safety? Where do we say, okay, this road is not going to be safe?
I'm not sure if we answered that question, Mr. Erickson. What's the criteria for road safety?
Yes, well, the, the statement was made that we are required to keep roads safe.
Okay. Let's see if Mr. Wright...
Is that you, Longwood, that you're saying here is that the plan...
Yeah, you could be here a while. But that's Mr. Wright's point is that he can give you a short, sweet answer.
That's a good question.
Tell us what you want.
My name is Jack Wright, CPW Director. I live on Seventy-Eighty Harbor Street, it's on the resident, it's apartment head. I have a nine-year-old, she's in third grade. And I'm a senior citizen.
Rock hard.
So I have a vested interest in all portions. And if it asks me, you know, would I rather have, you know, my daughter get the best education possible and dodge the potholes, the bus, bringing her to, bringing her to school? Yes, I would. But when we start talking about, as the former speaker did, pitching pennies and being at the end of the road, well, we're at the end of the road, folks. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also say the Department of Public Works has pinched about every penny there is. Is it, is it a significant sum, twenty-seven thousand dollars? Perhaps just some not. But what it does, as Lieutenant Ebersol said, sets the foundation. We have to start moving in that direction. We just have to. Our roads are in failure. Everyone sees it to the advantage of education of our youth. I really don't believe there's anything more important. And another comment made about living in our needs is also important. But when we look at deficits and deficits to close, the deficit in our road repair deficiencies is twelve million dollars. We're not talking about twenty-seven thousand to close the road budget. We're talking about twelve million dollars to get to where we should be. Even if we spend a million a year, which I proposed over the last five years, it only gets us to barely breaking. It's not my position to stand here, it never has been, nor other departments, to say, vote for me or give this money to me and don't give it to the debt. So there's a certain level of discomfort here. But again, I would be remiss to say, if I didn't say, when is enough enough? And can there be more of an equity about where we spend our money? Lastly, as I, as you know, I could go on and on about this thing. And I see that Mr. Savage always in here, so maybe... But I could never, I could never fill his shoes, nor do I care to do so. But look, we, since I've been here two decades, we've tripled, we've tripled the omnibus budget. We've remained stagnant in our road budget, stagnant, which in a sense, of course, goes down. And here's an opportunity, at the, at least where we pull the finance people together, we pull the officials together, the town manager, and say, listen, we, we have to start, you know, an old quote, the journey of a thousand miles starts with one. We have to start. Let us start, at least in the process. Let us begin the process and recognize that this is something we have to do. It's the infrastructure, it's the complexion of our town. So you are the folks that are going to vote. What you want to have is what you will vote for, as Mr. Alonso said the other night. You will vote, you will pay for what you expect. So I can't convince you, Superintendent Thomas may or may not be able to convince you. Government is run by those people that show up. And for thirty-five hundred households in Wimber today, look out, see people, it's two things. It's unconscionable that people don't want to take care of, take part in democratic process. And two, thanks for showing up.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Sir, you're going to have to advocate to other people who are going to need this chance to speak.
If you can't mind us, just two more comments, and I'll look for a response right there.
All right.
If your voice is just not twelve million dollars, twenty-seven thousand's not going to be much more. So why not go back to school?
Well, I'll answer that question. If our budget, it's not a budget, it's our deficiency. It's not a budget, it's our deficiency. And I'm not going to get into that argument of, well, why not give it back to the schools? Because the next year's brought by people. Our road repair budget's a hundred thousand dollars, the school's budget's eleven million. Why not give it to us? That's not what we're going to get into here, because that's non-protection. I'm showing you where it should go. I'm standing up for the law by the department. I'm not eliminating the need for education for our youth at a vested interest. I'm not being on every kid's school. So why not? It's only a pittance. It's a start, it's a foundation. You have to start, you have to get into the mentality here. The frame of mind, that our infrastructure value at seven hundred million dollars, seven, excuse me, seventy million dollars, needs to move forward, that we're working in depreciating results. Our deficiencies are greater than what we've ever done to put money forward. Let's start putting some money in that direction. Will it cause an overdose of burden on the schools? I can't speak to the schools. There are people that can say that much more eloquently. I just have to give you my position. No, I'm not willing to just give it up.
Mr. Wright. I'll be honest, I know I've had a...
Sir, 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 seriously. Okay, it's just that there's so many people to speak to. You can get back in line at the end and speak again if you need to. But I need to hear from some other people. Mr. Vogel.
Robert Cohen, sixteen eighty-six Massachusetts Avenue. Recently, the town has overwhelmingly spoken in support of the schools by approving a new high school. Buildings don't educate our students, though. Teachers and materials and what's inside the buildings educate our students. We need to continue to offer that same support, or they're going to be using the new paid roads to drive out of town, not into town. However, I don't think that we need to pit these two departments against each other. There's fifty thousand dollars in the reserve fund. There was fifty thousand dollars in the reserve fund last year. We can use any of it for the reserve fund purposes. Prudent budgeting would suggest that we can get by with half in the reserve fund. So I would suggest that the speaker think about where this money might come. So I would suggest that the speaker think about where this money might come from, that line thirteen might come from.
I'm gonna get back to you, Mr. Benson, because I did want to go. We get back to you, and it goes to sort of be an amendment that we can talk, we can vote on that one time. And you're obviously gonna get a chance to talk about this, who starts. I think finance committee, Mr. Erickson, do you need to speak again?
Yes, I just, uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to clarify something that the former, one of the former speakers said.
Mr. Erickson, can you get close to that microphone, a young ass?
I just wanted to clarify something that one of the former speakers said. He said that we were cutting the school budget. We're not cutting the school budget, we're cutting the increase to the school budget. The, uh, the increase to the school budget year over year is six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand And that's the difference between the current budget versus last year's budget, not the one with the twenty-seven thousand dollar increase. So I just wanted to clarify that. And by the way, I also have a vested interest in the schools. I have two young grandchildren who live in town. My daughter and her husband specifically chose Lunenburg to come to town and start a family. I'm on the school building committee, I'm helping to make that project happen. I wanna see our school system be healthy and strong, and I don't want to disappoint my grandchildren. I still think this is the right thing to do. We have to begin investing in our roads. We let it go on for far too long, and for far, if far unsafe.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Mr. Micasa.
I am from Micasa, ninety-seven Chase Road. I'm here speaking as a citizen and then as part of, as the planning board just to reinforce the conversation that Paul was starting earlier, as it relates to the Summer Street project and the financing of that, it is on. I hope everybody recalls that in the last two years, we put together at the planning board a Summer Street revitalization overhaul district, specifically with the understanding that at some point in time, that Summer Street would get reconfigured. And so we wanted to have that bi-labor place to promote economic development in that area. So anything that we do that pushes that design in the revitalization, revitalization of Summer Street to further moves out the economic development of that particular area, to more commercial or industrial development, providing substantial revenues that has no impact on the school, only has a positive impact on the overall community and helps to invite and promote the residents and everything. So, as Reverend Martin moved on, I think, just to understand what the impact of the design of Summer Street is, I'm just pushing out for it.
Thank you, Mr. Micasa. Mr. Alonso.
Obviously, there's a balance to be struck here between the two requests, the town manager's request and now the school department or the pending amendment. But before I reserve my final comment, once we decide this, but I want to ask if the superintendent of the school committee can just one more time review the actual number increase and where that money is going, because I think that somebody may lie to the fact, or there's certainly an implication that discretionary, I think, you're using more money than you should be as a portion of the budget. And I want to revisit, I know there was one slide in the superintendent's presentation that went over where there was a decrease, or if we could just review that one more time, that would be very helpful.
So there are, the driver for the...
Knock into the microphone, nice.
The driver for the increase in the school budget this year is...
Can I hear you?
Can I hear you?
We can hear you.
Okay, the driver for the increase in the school budget this year is very clearly driven by mandatory increases in services to students, right? We have civil rights issues in our district, and then we have had an increase in the number of students who come into our district not speaking English from eight to twenty-seven. That's a dramatic increase in the number of students in our district who are not native English speakers. And by the laws of this great nation that we live in, we're required to provide educational services to those students. That has led to a substantial increase, most of that hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-dollar increase in personnel that you see right there. The three paraprofessionals are driven by a need for special ed kids who are also, that's a mandatory expenditure, we do not have discretion over increasing or decreasing those costs. And so all of the personnel increases and the cost increase there is driven entirely by mandatory requirements. If we go and look at the expense portion, this is, there's a four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar increase here, that's a mandatory increase due to out-of-district tuition, that's imposed on us by the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Commonwealth does not pay for it. So this is a, an obligation that we need to be held to. So if you look at just those two numbers, that's five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars of the entire increase in the school budget that's driven by mandatory increases in costs, right? So the school committee, I think, I will have to say that the superintendent and the administration have done well above and beyond the call of duty to figure out how to take a sixty-million-dollar budget with a net increase of a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in discretionary funding and find a way to educate all of our students next year. So if you look at what the discretionary part of the increase is, it's on the table, it's about a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Is there something about that that's not clear, or that I can help anyone with?
Great. We're gonna get to you, Mr. Benson, I promise you, but very solid. This is Bart.
I just want to comment, and it's not a comment made by a prior speaker. I have had two children graduate from Hurford High School, and I now have three grandchildren that are going to be in Hurford High School, one of which already is. So I am fully vested in our schools, completely stand behind the education, and I think in our school planning and our community as a whole, and we have to try to supporting our children. So my comments are all such a road waste, in no way reflect or negate the importance of that. The reality is, our roads are in such a horrible state, and we as communities have to start investing, investing our resources, keep fixing that, that, that resource. The CPW director talked about that twelve-million-dollar infrastructure. Other communities across the Commonwealth actively taking advantage of federal aid programs that are available. I talked to him about that tip process. The only way you get into that tip process is investing into design and planning. And then you can, then you can get millions of dollars, which is how we are now looking at over six-million-dollar projects that we're here at Summer Street. We have other opportunities. Only way we can come to the table is if we invest in order to get to that design process and to break the cost. We are literally losing out, and I sit at the table and I see what other communities are doing. We have to start investing, and the payoff will be astronomical if we start or even the money in. Twenty-seven thousand dollars might seem like a small amount of money, but it's not. When you look at it, at the process that's been laid out, we have a very clear, well-fout out case of engine broken. And then in the DPW director, the engine is the footfall of a plane that makes sense for us this week, and we can't change the way of that money.
Thank you. Give me a second. I'm gonna let Mr. Benson make his amendment, because we thought Mr. Bowen had to say, you know, these passions up here, and I think that hopefully will upraise this discussion. Mr. Benson, make it an official amendment now.
All right, my amendment is to, so if I'm moving instead of, I took Mr. Bowen's, the previous speaker's advice, and given that we haven't used, last year didn't use money from the reserve fund, it currently has the amount of fifty thousand dollars on line thirteen, so I'd like to move that we move twenty-seven thousand dollars from line thirteen, so we aren't going to be affecting the roads, and move that reserve, twenty-seven thousand reserve fund money to line seventeen on this rule.
Okay, so there's amendment, is there a second?
Second.
So there's an amendment and a second, so what's gonna happen, proceed, okay? And this is why, Mr. Benson, I wanted to have the discussion before we made it into this amendment. Now there's an amendment on the floor, and we're gonna move the money from reserve, if it was approved, to schools, twenty-seven thousand is what he suggested, just so that we can frame the discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Terry Burcfield, I live at, what's the twenty-two, I speak. And I want, actually, just to address what you just said about the reserve fund, I don't know if you noticed, but basically we close out this fiscal year by defiling the reserve fund against the overages and expenses in the snow has budget, and other things, just to close out this, this current year. That being said, I also just have a question regarding on the pavement management plan and the funds that were assigned for engineering. What I wasn't clear on was whether or not that's funds that will come back to us so that we can put that money back into the actual paving, just because I hadn't seen that discussed before. Um, because I know that the money that we put towards paving was basically to pave, but see the engineering cost, I'm not sure if that's, and I thought, what I heard Mrs. Bertram saying was that that was funds that were supposed to have been provided by the state that may come from state, I was just curious about that.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask you this, by the way, to address your question, she's talking, maybe tell you something else. But, not anymore. Okay. But what I wanted to say, let's not spend a lot of our time now talking necessarily about roads, unless that amendment is defeated and somebody comes back and funding it out of roads. The amendment is before you now, as to whether or not it's gonna be out of reserve. Go ahead, Mr. Benson.
So last year, our local legislative delegation, Representative Vincent, Senator Flanagan, Representative Dean Natale, were successful in getting a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar earmark in the state transportation bond bill for the remainder of the design for Summer Street, for the seventy-five percent design that remains. Four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to cover the design costs for the three communities, Lunenburg, Pittsburgh, and Munster. Just because the money is in the transportation bond bill doesn't mean the state actually has to spend that. And that's the problem that we're facing right now, is the money is there, but we need the governor to spend down the bond bill to get to our project, and he's refusing to do so. So we are concerned that if we don't move forward with this project, because we have our construction funds lined up, as Mrs. Bertram stated, for fiscal seventeen, if we don't move forward with the design now, we won't be able to maintain those construction funds. Six-point-three-million dollars in construction costs that will come in the form of a grant. So that's why we're looking to move this project forward now. We do have an opportunity, or probably our last opportunity would be in July, when the governor comes out with his capital improvement project, and we are hopeful that we will get that project into his capital plan. But the way it's been going, we're not sure, so we would like to start to proceed. So if that money becomes available at some point, we are hopeful that it will come back to the town. But there's no guarantee that the money will ever be available, or that if it is available, that anything that we have spent will come back to the town.
Okay. We're still talking about roads, but the amendment on is about reserve. Mr. Freeman, go ahead.
Mark Freeman, three-thirty-eight North Field. I'd just like to express my concern about taking the money out of, out of reserve. We're two months away from even being in the budget, so if we're taking away reserve before we start, it's not much of a reserve. I think that's something that needs to be reserved for decisions to be made later by the appropriate boards when the unforeseen needs arise, that perhaps requires some of those ones.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Matthews.
The contention that the reserve fund was not spent this year, this fiscal year, if not...
I really can't hear you.
Sorry. The contention that the reserve fund was not spent this year is incorrect, spurback to our money. We spent that money to balance the budget, wasn't spent by the finance committee out of reserve, but it was used to balance the current year budget. I respectfully disagree with the previous speaker that contends that fifty thousand dollars, that it's just imprudent, or imprudent to hold that money aside. I couldn't disagree more. We have a twenty-nine-million-dollar budget, we have very little room, we have almost no reserves other than that fifty thousand and some for salaries. So it's not a whole lot of room to work. Quite honestly, the department has and the town manager, it's amazing, friends, to bring our budget in and cover our expenses, given the severity of winter and other unexpected costs that we did cover. I would just say, fifty thousand, we need to have that available to us for what comes, we're not ready for.
Mr. Alonso.
I would say that, as I've said in the past many, many years, that nothing is more important from a capital perspective than the road management, fine pavement, and plan. Also, I would say that I am one-hundred percent behind in the Summer Street project, which people have referred to here, where this money initially was going to come from, and what it's not now. And I don't want to jeopardize those. But there are other priorities, too, and there are other, the reason I asked for the clarification about where the money was going from, is because it's not like I feel the school department or the school committee is voluntarily, voluntarily trying to increase their budget. Clearly, the majority, the vast majority of their budget is coming from state and federal demand, and I think that when we're talking about one-tenth of one percent of this budget, we may, we're talking about one-time money here, if we took it out of the roads, we may be able to get the grant going with other means, but somebody can't repeat third grade or fourth grade. I think that has a direct impact on people well beyond that. And I realize the delicate balance between the two. So I'm more than willing to have a conversation about it. I will say, however, with the direct amendment before us, I cannot support it, because fifty thousand dollars, while not used during the year, and I agree with this Matthews, was used today, fifty thousand dollars is the only money that we have for emergency funds, barring calling a town meeting. Just because we didn't use it this year, I think bringing that below fifty thousand dollars is not prudent, and I can't support the amendment for that reason.
I think you're very thoughtful, Chris.
If I may, my...
If I may, this is a clarifying remark, I obviously didn't mean to say it wasn't spent. What I said was it wasn't used for reserve fund purposes. The reserve, the reserve fund is, of course, an allocation for the finance committee to distribute in emergency situations as needed during the year. I'm not sure they'd know better than me, obviously, how frequently that has actually happened over the last several years, because of the excellent planning of our town manager and our town, we're conservative, we're able to anticipate these needs. And instead, it frequently gets used in budget adjustments when we need to. However, we've also talked about possible solar monies coming on, and we're just allocating risks at this moment. And we could make the adjustment either at a town meeting in the fall, once we know what the solar project has, or as we have done this year, and I think we have done in the past several years, actually use the reserve fund at this time and not during the year. We're talking about risks, as the member of the select board just said, we're talking about students who can't repeat the third grade, I'm gonna support the amendment.
Go ahead, Mr. Benson's gonna defer into his speaking.
Okay, so I, I would like to...
This is the recording, just give your name.
Sure, I'll repeat, I'm still Greg Burkew, I still live in a ten year old home, and at the moment, I'm still chair of the school. So I'd like to just reiterate, and I agree with the previous speaker, that this is all about risk. So if we don't have these dollars in the school committee budget, the school committee budget, we cannot wait to act on this deficit until September, we can't wait to act on it in December, we have to act on it before July first, which means effectively in the next couple of weeks, because the schools, we only have a couple of meetings left. And so we'll be making decisions in the next four weeks that will either incorporate this deficit and, you know, reduce the services to our kids, or we won't. That same situation is not true of the roads, or of the stabilization fund, or of the, I'm sorry, whatever the finance committee funding that I will not call the slush funds. It's, those, those dollars aren't actually needed to be committed or obligated in the next couple of months. And so this is all about the risk that the solar project won't become available this year, right? So what we're doing is, this town manager has a conservative assessment that we will have, we will not have those ones available. That's unlikely to occur, but it puts some conservatism in the budget, that's out of state there. But you can trade a little bit of...
But you can trade a little bit of risk in the town budget because you have that conservatism built in elsewhere. And unfortunately, the consequences for our kids, if we force the school to take, to not have that $27,000 to close this gap, will happen. So we will realize that risk. It's not a potential risk, it's something that will happen. And if the solar project comes online, we cannot buy it back later.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, I'm going to give you the last word. I think we're going to be ready to vote, and then everybody has passed around the issue. Oh, ready to vote, recommendations, wouldn't you worry? But Mr. Benson's going to get the last word, and then we'll give recommendations, which I think we forget that is what. Mr. Benson, last.
So I just wanted to agree with what the previous speaker said in terms of, I think it's very unlikely that the solar project will not come online, buy all the money that we need in order to handle the risk of reducing a little over $20,000 from the reserve fund, so.
Got it. Selectmen, what are your recommendations?
Would selectmen recommend disapproval of the amendment?
Is that unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Okay.
Disapprove.
Yeah.
Disapprove.
Mr. Erickson, what's the FinCon? I'm going to say.
You're a tight group.
Please think about volunteering for the very important committee. Have all this time to try. I mean, FinCon obviously has a very active role, very busy during the end of the year, but some of the other ones, they got sort of, right with the involved in town, lots of people, it's so easy to get set up, but it's not anymore, it's not always.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to point out that the reserve fund was drawn upon in fiscal '12 in the amount of $44,393. I can't tell you exactly what that was, but I can tell you that we did use that amount in fiscal '12. We have not had other draws in the last five years. However, ironically enough, we had a conversation about increasing the reserve fund to $75,000 this year, which we decided against. We recommend it against the amendment.
Is that unanimous?
Unanimous.
So at this point in time, we're voting on the amendment. We're not voting on the whole budget, we're not voting on the school's budget, just several things. But we're voting on the amendment, and the amendment reads, transfer $27,000, the amount of $27,000, we move from line 13 to line 79. All votes, quite simply, adjourned. All those who favor, favorite, please sign it by saying aye.
Aye!
opposed?
No!
It's a defeat. Mr. Moderator, I hope you're quiet soon. Okay, let me see if there's anybody that needs to talk about the overall budget at this point in time. There doesn't seem to be anybody at the microphone. Removing a surprise, which I will remind you needs to be done after, like, in the future. Correct! Ready to vote. All those who favor Article 18, as was originally printed in your, what? If you vote on the bus flight, $29,79,384, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
opposed?
Aye.
Passed by a large majority. Article 19. Yes?
I move a town vote to approve the town manager's administrative organization plan, creative land use agreement, supporting the activities of all boards and departments involved in regulating land use, land development in town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Selectmen, what's your recommendation?
Disapproval.
FinCon, do you have a recommendation on this one? Mr. Bowen.
While they are experiencing technical difficulties, I just want to remark, as they go in for this particular article, we used to have a fine tradition here at town meeting of recognizing our retirement employees. As we are discussing the planning board, I would like this meeting to recognize the long-term member of the planning board, retirement planning director, Mary Benson.
Welcome. Administrative plan, or through a bylaw amendment, and I'm proposing today that this change be made by administrative plan. This is something that is new, maybe this is the first time something like this has been brought to town meeting, the first change that we've looked, have looked to make, at least this way, through the charter. So today, I will present this plan to you, and the plan, according to the charter, becomes effective 60 days from the date of the presentation, which would make it July 3rd, 2014, unless town meeting approves, votes to approve the plan change earlier, which I'm hoping will be done today. The charter only allows town meeting to approve or disapprove the plan. Town meeting certainly can ask questions, debate the plan, but can't offer any amendments to the plan. It needs to be approved or disapproved as presented. So there was a handout in the hall that contains the full plan, and I'm just going to take a few minutes to highlight the plan. So the purpose here is to provide a coordinated and comprehensive approach to the town's land use management, planning, economic development, conservation, historic preservation, and planning, future planning objectives. The proposal is to hire a land use director, effective July 1st of 2014. Actually, in the handouts, I believe we, it's in 2015, hopefully we marked over all of those, we didn't want to reprint them after, after they get all done and copied, so it is 2014. And this director would coordinate the efforts of all boards and departments involved in regulating land use and land development in town. And that would include providing assistance to the agricultural commission, board of health, building, plumbing, and wiring inspection functions, the conservation commission, historical commission, planning board, and the zoning board appeals. The land use director would also coordinate related activities with the sewer commission and the department of public works. The benefits, as I see it, of hiring the land use director would be to provide a professional town planner on staff to work with the planning board, to update the existing master plan, subdivision regulations, and other zoning regulations, to guide growth and development in accordance with community-wide goals, to provide coordination of efforts of land use departments, to make the best and most efficient use of resources, and also to provide, to have less reliance on town council for planning level advice. That should come from staff level rather than town council, which is a non-sent source, to provide a directed effort toward economic development and business retention, and a directed effort toward obtaining grants and review and analysis of regionalization The director would be appointed by the town manager in accordance with sections 4-2C and D in the town charter. And that means that the appointment is ratified both by the planning board and the board of selectmen. All appointments by the town manager unless specifically provided for in another manner are ratified by the board of selectmen. Here, because this person would also serve as the planning director, it is the planning board that will file that appointment. The town manager will retain appointing authority, but the director, the land use director, will maintain direct supervision over the existing positions of building commissioner, the administrative assistant in the building department, the administrative assistant in conservation, the conservation agent, the administrative assistant in the planning board, the plumbing inspector, and the wiring inspector. And I note that the director will not have supervisory authority over any board of health employees, because they are appointed directly by the board of health in accordance with Mass General Law. So the essential functions of this land use director would be to plan, correct, evaluate enforcement of land use controls, to coordinate each departmental activities and projects, to ensure efficacy of project planning, development proposals, to oversee permitting, coordinating activities of the peer-reviewed engineer, draft policies, bylaws, and regulations related to land use, to provide technical assistance to the planning board, the board of selectmen, the town, the town manager, and town meeting, to monitor and direct all community and economic development activities, including business retention. And this is something new. We don't want to have anybody who works directly on economic development activities. And as we talked about with the Summer Street project, we are seeing that as a great corridor for economic development within the town, to strengthen the existing businesses that are there, and to hopefully attract new businesses to that area to bring additional revenues and opportunities to the town. The minimum qualifications for this person would be a bachelor's degree in community or regional planning, 10 years' experience in the municipal planning office, preference given to candidates with a master's degree. It is very typical that you will see town planners have a master's degree. That is, it's just the standard for planning directors across the country. Obviously, any combination of equivalent education and experience would be acceptable, working knowledge of applicable federal and state laws, and in the current 2015 budget, we have approved a salary of up to $85,000. That's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Anybody like to ask any questions? Will danger discuss this article? I don't see anyone at the microphone, so you can answer, but we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 19 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
opposed?
Passed unanimously.
Article 20, the so-called Pay As You Throw program. Mr. Bowen.
I moved a town vote to appropriate for solid waste disposal enterprise revenues to sum up $285,000 to operate the solid waste disposal program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
It's our recommendation to approve this. Recommend approval--
Finance committee?
We recommend approval.
If we want to discuss pay as you throw, we have spent hours on this, I'm used to. There's no one at the microphone, I'm ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
opposed?
Passed unanimously.
Article 21, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate water enterprise revenues to sum up $25,000 to operate the storage department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Would selectmen recommend approval?
Finance committee?
We recommend approval.
I always like to say at this time of year that this is not your water district, folks. This is a water department that serves just a few houses in town. Anybody want to discuss or debate or ask questions? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 21, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
opposed?
Passed unanimously.
Article 22, sewer commission chair, Mr. Luck. Luck, I can't even hear you, now I'm going to look. There you go. I'm going to stick around, there you go.
I moved the town vote to approve the, from the sewer enterprise revenues to sum up $814,242, I'm sorry, $814,242 to operate the sewer department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Would selectmen recommend approval?
Finance.
We recommend approval.
Tell us about Mr. Luck.
Sure, the wall is a very high-level summary of the budget, and over the last three years, you can see that this year, the $814-- There. This is the amount of revenues, which we're very happy to report equals the amount of planned budget spending, so we have a balanced budget. We have no transfers from retained earnings this year again, second year. And the only thing I want to make is that, you know, 95% of the revenues come from the user, the fees on the storage, a very small amount comes from fees and connections and so forth. And of the expenditures, 55% is what we pay for Pittsburgh and Lunenburg to take our service, we don't have a sewer precinct facility.
Anyone want to ask any questions, debate this article? See anybody at the microphone, so I assume we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
opposed?
Passed unanimously.
We're very prepared. A member from the cemetery commission, I think that's going to be Mr. Bingham. All the way down, Mr. Bingham, or in the center. The one to hide.
Mr. Seminole, I'm Greg, I'm the superintendent of the cemeteries in the town, over at 284 Island Street. I moved that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $25,000 from the sale of cemetery lots account for the use of care, improvement, and involvement of the cemetery.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Would selectmen recommend approval?
Finance.
Recommend approval.
What do you want to tell us about it, Mr. Bingham?
Not much at all, other than improving a lot of cemeteries. And this money comes from the sale of cemetery lots that we sell as a progressive line, uh, just that's it.
Fantastic. We're not anxious to come visit him, Mr. Bingham. All those in favor of Article 23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
opposed?
Passed unanimously.
Back to Mr. Luck.
With the sewer commission.
Mr. Luck, we're very prepared for proof today, so I know you have a presentation, but you've been-- You need to get a microphone, the microphone, you need--
I moved the town vote to amend the sewer service area map by changing the map coloration to indicate only those areas inside and outside the sewer service area and the sewer service zone, and to remove parcel ID 75-54, 243 White Street, Lunenburg, parcel ID 75-55, 163 Pearl Street, Pittsburgh, and parcel ID 75-58, 700 Pearl Street, Pittsburgh, from the sewer service area and the sewer service zone.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Would selectmen recommend approval?
Finance, is there a recommendation in this room?
Yes, we recommend approval.
And you? Mr. Luck, tell us about Article 24.
Very quickly.
Back.
The areas that we're removing are right there in red. It's driven by one property that is recently connected directly to Pittsburgh, and no longer our responsibility, so to speak, so we need to remove them, remove them out. And there are two other adjacent properties which I just slipped along, Lunenburg, they really shouldn't have been added. So that's, that really is the only true change to the map. The other change is simply, we used to show what was already sewered and what could be sewered, so the sewer service area had two colors to it. We removed that because every year we come back here because something happens that just changes the color. And we don't want people to become worn down by changes to the sewer service zone that are insignificant, because a true change to sewer service zone is extremely significant, and we want to pay very much attention to it, it truly has to be changed. It's critical to respect our city and our environment. So, going forward, anytime we come up with a change in sewer service area, in particular in Ashland District, we're--
Thank you, Mr. Luck, for your发言. Seeing no one at the microphone, I assume we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 24, please-- favor of Article twenty-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Pass it unanimously. Mr. Luck, Luck number twenty-five. Can't get away from you, sir.
Sorry, I thought I got away. This one's so long, I wish Jamie would read it.
Well, is it exactly as it's been printed in the warrant?
It is exactly as it's been printed in the warrant.
And I assume, unless I can differently from the town and people at town meeting right now, that you will allow it to be moved as printed exactly in the warrant?
So moved.
Agreed.
So moved.
Okay. You don't have to read it though. Just say, "I move Article twenty-five as printed in the warrant," please.
I move Article twenty-five as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, what's your recommendation, Article twenty-five?
Selectmen recommend approval.
And you, Mr. Cal, what's your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Mr. Luck, tell us about it briefly.
As briefly as I can, and I have some help here from Mr. Kevin Olson, who is the lead engineer on our comprehensive wastewater plan, which is what is driving this. So this is a project, a two-point-two-million-dollar project, to extend the sewer to two areas of previously identified need. Pratt Street area, includes Pratt Street, Renee, and then Lakeview area, which is Cross Road, Pine Grove Road, Lakeview, Barris, and Sunset Heights. So these are two distinctly separate areas, but this one, two-point-two-million-dollar is to extend sewer to both. We believe that by doing this, we can save, you know, save some money of scale here by combining some of the costs. The majority of the funding comes from an SRS loan from the state, which is a low-interest loan. The rest of the warrant will be done by the town, but in both cases, all of the costs will be put into a settlement, which is a hundred percent allocated to the people affected. No impact to tax, taxes are any outside of the two areas affected here. This is just a quick overview. These maps are in the mall of the Pratt Street area, Pratt Street, Renee, and the box is the sewer service area. And here is the Waylon Lake area, and what will be sewn, where should we start? Both of these areas were identified in a comprehensive wastewater plan as areas of need. Pratt Street, place has high-water area. It was actually the original sewer, but got dubbed out at last minute for some reason, so we're not making that up. Lakeview area, there was a very detailed ranking of all the areas. Ludenburg and the Lakeview area actually ranked extremely high, second highest out of twenty-four for needs. So this is the area that we're very happy to report. And both projects were initiated by residents of the area who came to Sewer Commission, and were delighted to help them coordinate this. One of the things that the Sewer Commission has as part of our policies is that a two-thirds approval of the residents affected is required. And both areas met that quite comfortably. Lakeview at sixty-nine percent, out of forty-two properties, twenty-nine approved it, and Pratt at thirty-eight properties, twenty-nine again approved it. Not the same twenty-nine. So we comfortably met that criteria.
Thank you, Carl. I am Kevin Olson with Ray Pierce. So as Carl noted, we have been working with the town through the Sewer Commission for a number of years, starting back with the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan is really the driver for this. So a couple of details, as Carl noted, these two areas were noted as needs areas. Once that was, you know, determined, we needed to look at solutions. So we identified a number of solutions and ultimately came up with what we think is the best technical and cost-effective solution for each area. So real quickly, for Pratt Street, we call it combined conventional and pressure sewer system mix. What that means to you is, on Pratt Street from west all the way down to wherever connected the existing sewer on Waylon, would be gravity sewer. And then for Renney Street, which, you know, topographically, taken away from Pratt Street, it would be a pressure sewer system. That made the most sense there. Moving over to Lakeview Ave area, lack of geography, the location, you know, the lake, variety of other reasons, a conventional sewer system would have forced the pipes deep, would have required several additional common pumping stations. It really didn't make sense financially. So a pressure sewer system is recommended over there. Little bit more on project details. So if you combine both properties, total, there would be eighty properties that would be affected or provided the opportunity for new municipal sewer service. For the breakdown of that, in Pratt Street, you can see right up on the wall there, there's a total of thirty-eight properties. Lakeview, there's forty-two. In the Pratt Street area, twenty-eight of those would be gravity connections. On Renney Street, the ten different parcels there, a couple of them likely could connect by gravity. The rest would be grinder pump or pressure connections. And then in the Lakeview Ave area, again, the whole area there is recommended as a pressure sewer. What that means is, small diameter pipes, from inch and a half to three-inch diameter, shallow area, but all of the properties would actually have their own individual grinder pump to connect into that pressure sewer system. Moving right down, how many grinder pumps total would there be between the two areas? About fifty? You can do the math. Then a little bit on length. It doesn't add a lot of sewer to the town, but it adds just over a mile. You can see one-point-three miles. On Pratt Street, there'd be a couple thousand feet of eight-inch gravity sewer. And then the rest of the project is just under a mile, and we've got small diameter, low-pressure sewer. Cost, you've already seen in the article, two-point-two million is what's before you today in the warrant article. This slide here, we just wanted to give you a breakdown of what, you know, makes up that number. Estimated construction cost is one-point-two, administrative engineering, legal, police, about point-seven. And then last but not least, for projects of this size and type and where you are right now, we typically recommend about fifteen, maybe twenty percent contingency. As you can see, we've carried sixteen percent, which is the point-three. Last two items, the last bullet there, again, Carl noted that you are in a talentless position right now for a loan interest loan, it's two percent. Not all of the project costs would be eligible. You can see, though, the good news is a strong percentage would be one-point-six to one-point-eight. Certain things like engineering, some administrative costs just aren't eligible as the way it is part of the program. The last item is private property costs, I'm not included. Funding mechanisms, again, you've heard already, we scored very well, the town scored very well, to get onto the fundable list, which they call the intended use plan. That became final last month, so it's official. I think, Carl, I think you've already touched on the others. The project cost recovery would be fee betterments, and again, no impact to the tax base, and no net cost to the town or to the enterprise fund. So where have you been? What's brought you up to today? Well, again, the P E F was submitted back in August. We were thankful to be able to help you guys qualify for that. Made the fundable list, the draft in December, made the final in April, and then there's been a lot of work, I know, by a lot of residents in the Sewer Commission over the last several months, to confirm that there is support for sewer extensions in both areas. And then, of course, we stand here today. So, depending on how the town decides to vote, and if the town decides to proceed forward, what might the schedule look like? What might some of the milestones be? Well, if it does move forward, engineering design, survey, some of the board, what happens starting, I assume, after July first? It would be about a six-month effort, take you through the end of December. As part of utilizing this or a form process, you would have to make the actual application submit on or before October fifteenth. Right now, you are on the list, but you actually have to tell them whether you want to actually engage with them in the loan. Funding authorization, should you get to that point where you submit the application, D E P, the Clean Water Favor Trust, actually has to issue a project approval certificate by the end of the year, December two thousand fourteen. So at that point, the project could go out to bed over the winter, sometime next spring. We put down May twenty-fifteen, you could commence construction. We think, you know, conservatively, it could take a year, maybe given a winter like this winter. Perhaps could be done quite a bit quicker than that, but we put it May twenty-fifteen to May twenty-sixteen. And then right after that, sewer connections could begin, and after that, assessments could be made.
Just finally, just acknowledge, and just really would like to thank the residents that came forward and went out to help and explained to their neighbors what was going on. Sewer commissioners are, really two of our sewer commissioners who, when we didn't quite get enough response, a couple of our commissioners went out, and I asked, they asked not to have anything to do with me. But that really pushed it over the top. And it really is a matter of education, it wasn't a matter of property. You just, you didn't quite understand, it's hard to communicate with them. So, and thanks to the board. Our town manager for helping us with my number. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Cassius, is that you?
Sure is.
Speak right up.
David Cassius, twenty-six, Waynes Street. I just have one quick question. Wondering if there's a dollar estimate as to what the betterment fee is going to be. I know you can't pin it down to a tax dollar, but you have a range of what the betterment fee for the local house block, the weekly most section?
The both sections are a little different, but fast and quick. I know, but simple calculation, if there's eighty houses, if it becomes equal, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars each.
Anyone else on Article twenty-five? I'm sure we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Pass it unanimously. Article twenty-six, Mr. Alonzo.
I move that the town vote to amend Article twenty-five under town bylaws entitled Public Access Cable Committee as a potential one.
Is there a second? Selectmen, your recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee, your recommendation?
Board of Selectmen, approval.
Want to say something, Mr. Alonzo?
Basically, as you see on the slide, we are looking to amend the existing bylaw, to either make additions, modifications or changes, to make it bring it in line with many of our other bylaws, and also to add certain items. For instance, that list adds responsibility for the path regulating and the propagation of policy directives. We're going to leave the requirement that their office be a town hall. There are critical components, we're going to change membership from seven to five, bringing in line with more of our town bodies, which are easier to run and easier to manage, and certainly easier to get volunteers to fly. We're going to change the staff that's appointed, the paid staff that's appointed by the town manager, not by the committee. We're also adding the requirement that if the committee submitted annual budget for presenting to town meeting, and we're also wanting to round there, we're clarifying that the appointment of the members is by the Board of Selectmen. There's some language in there that's going to give some a little bit of trickery, the appointment of the members would be by the Board of Selectmen.
And so this will be in that, definitely, if you want to volunteer for this committee, right?
Yes.
Any discussion or questions about Article twenty-six? Sitting down at the microphone, those are ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Pass it unanimously. Article twenty-seven, I believe this is the last one.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, across the hall, three-sixty-two Sunset Lane, Dean Chairman of the Clay Hill. Today we're going to talk about the...
Oh, yeah, move the articles first.
Oh, okay. Mr. Moderator, I would move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section four-point-zero, use regulations by adding a new section four-point-sixteen entitled Registered Marijuana Dispensary as printed in the warrant.
Thanks. Is there a second? Selectmen, what is your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Thank you, Finance?
We'd like to see the presentation. We don't believe this financial advice.
When, and what was your recommendation? We didn't want to vote.
The planning board voted approval, five to zero.
Five to zero, thank you. Okay, now tell us about it.
Okay. And we were in front of you in the January meeting, going forward, and I was thinking before kind of the vice chairman had done a great job, explaining here. And I just want everybody to understand, because everybody had great feedback about how they feel about the marijuana bylaw coming into town, but what it is, it's a zoning issue. The law already was passed. As we go through the presentation, we've got two public hearings, March twenty-fourth to March and April fourteen, and then the, on April twenty-eighth, voting to accept it. But on November sixth, two thousand and twelve, it was voted in the state of Massachusetts that these medical marijuana would be provided in communities. So the law is already here. We just have to make sure we're zoning it properly in the... So they went into effect as of January first, two thousand and thirteen, that Eric, the Attorney General, said, "No community can deny this." And what it is, a registered marijuana dispensary, also known as Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, means a not-for-profit entity registered under one-oh-five C M R seven-two-five that acquires, cultivates, possesses processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana-infused products, physical aerosol oils or ointments, transfers, transports, sells, distributes, dispends, or administers marijuana products containing marijuana-related supplies, educational materials to registered, followed by patients or their personal caregivers. Unless other plans specified, R and D refers to the site of dispensing, cultivating, and preparation of marijuana. And again, it's already in law. We just want to make sure we're zoning them in right locations in Ludenburg. This is just some background information, maybe because everybody has the handleout in the lobby, but I just, the state has accepted thirty-five. I listed four of the twenty locations already approved, just so you have that for your information. And Air Mass was one of them, that has been approved to open up a dispenser room. So that's more informational slide. We had three options when the law was passed back in twelve. We can do nothing. And then anybody, once they got approval by the state, could come into Ludenburg and set up their shop. We could adopt a temporary moratorium, which the state is saying you can only do till December thirty-first or fourteen, or we can amend our town zoning bylaws, which we presented today. That's the role of what we're thinking to do today, to regulate where they're going to adopt. This is the bylaw, and under the bylaw, everything is exactly on the board, except two administrative, really administrative, changes. So that's what we're going to talk about, the two changes. The first one, the government has the handle, so you know who it is. Was just given to me today by council, town council, which is, is on page four, four-point-sixteen-point-two.
Now, if I can stop here, listen. These are changes from what was printed in the warrant, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
That's fine. For him to talk about it, so people know what's going on. But the motion was to approve what's in the warrant. So technically speaking, what we're going to do is, when you're done with all of your presentation, talk about some changes that you'd like to make. And you're going to make an amendment to make these particular changes. We're going to vote on the amendment, whether the changes are allowed or not, and then we'll vote on the entire article, just so everybody's clear procedure, okay? But these are things that are changes that are different from what was originally written in the warrant, right?
Absolutely.
Got it.
You are fantastic. All right. So the first one, as I said, is four-point-sixteen, two-point-two. The town reserves the right to require provisions. What town council has recommended we add, and the planning board has approved that, is that the town reserves the right to require compliance with provisions in the D P H regulation, for which the state granted waivers and/or exceptions to our empty applicant based on provisions of section eight-point-three-point-three as to a special permit, and section eight-point-four as to the development plan review. So administratively, he just thought it would be more clarifying to have compliance with. So we're just adding those two words into that bylaw. And then the next one we were doing, when we thought, some great feedback from the Board of Selectmen, on the last slide, page six, the last amendment will be four-point-sixteen-point-ten documentation. And Kerry's going to get us to that slide. Thank you. The planning board shall be providing... The planning board shall be provided with all decisions or approvals, denials, or other substantive action by DPH regarding the RMD in all submitted of information between the applicant or RMD and DPH, is what it states now. We're adding, in the last sentence, so it would be, the planning board shall be provided with all decisions or approvals, denials, or other substantive actions by DPH regarding the RMD and all submitted of information relating to such activities between the applicant or RMD and DPH. So those are the two administrative changes that we're looking to do in our rule. And attorney about to write in those amendments as we speak. Relating to such activities. Activities.
Did you write it down?
I did. I've written down the whole of this slide. Yes.
Okay. So, let's keep writing down. Just make sure that we're done, okay? Okay, let's go.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay.
I'm sure you have.
So, I assume, when you say it, that you're moving to make amendments of what's printed in the warrant, as you just explained them, all, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One second.
I made a motion to amend.
I made the motion to amend.
The articles that printed in the warrant.
The articles that printed in the warrant.
Like changes that I just described.
To reflect changes that I just described.
Article 4.16.2.2.
To 4.1.6.2.
As close.
As close. And Section 4.6. Oh, point, what one are you doing? The first one or the second?
That's half.
The last one is 4.16.10.
That would be 16.10.
Okay.
All right. Is there a second to your amendment?
Second.
All right.
I now pronounce you Article 25.
This is my very, very first call.
Thank you. Okay. So just on the amendment, just so we're clear that a lot of matches, a lot of debate on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say that by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay. Now you've got the article before you, properly amended, and how, how's a lot of the language changing, okay? Good. Now we're going to talk about the article. Do you have anything to say, if you're moving to the article, what we take?
None.
Okay. Sir?
Artur, if you could follow along with your act. I have two questions. One is, can you define community as, as we said, regular vision? Does meaning each and every town, city, or can meaning combinations of Pittsburgh, Denver, or those same regulations define what community is?
I bet that's a great question for town council, and I'll bet he's still writing it. The question, Artur, is, will the article talks about community? Does that mean a town? Does that mean a grouping of towns? What's community?
Mr. Moderator, I guess it would be helpful to know precisely what you're referring to. The bylaw only regulates activities in the town, of course. If it was a friend of the community, I'm going to assume it needs the town. Can you point me to a specific place that you have in mind with the bylaw?
I'm not sure that it's specified in the article itself. Same way that the state requirement is that every community.
Okay, so that, that would be the town. I bet each town, the statute calls for there to be up to three dispensaries in each county. And there was one town early on after the law was passed by the voters. There was a town that passed a bylaw that said it prohibited in the town, the town being Wakefield. And the attorney general disapproved that bylaw on the grounds of the statute said there had to be some in each county, and therefore you couldn't have communities saying that towns, cities, can't have in our town. Attorney general disapproved the bylaw, and the town took it to court. The Superior Court recently ruled to uphold the attorney general's ruling stating that every community had to make themselves available, every town or city had to make themselves available for these dispensaries.
That would also prove, move to make an amendment to paragraph 4.16.5.2.
Okay, let us get it on the board, okay? 4.16.5.2. That you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that was, yeah.
It's all I have, Lee.
Yeah. What do you want to make as an amendment, sir?
I'd like to change that, um, you just recommended a concept plan. We change to a concept plan showing the proposed use shall be submitted to the planning board. Rather than just making a recommendation, so that it has to be submitted.
So you made an amendment. Is there a second to your amendment?
Second.
Somebody seconded it, okay. Tell us your thoughts on your amendment, sir.
Well, having been involved in creating specifications for a lot of human centered projects, that's very subject to interpretation. I recommended someone could just say, well, we don't want to do it.
Okay. Do you want to address that, Alonzo?
I, I don't have a construct of that, but Mr. Paul.
If somebody else on the panel wants to address your amendment, just on the amendment, okay? The amendment is, strike the words recommended, start with the word that, a concept plan showing the proposed use shall be.
It represents that what, concept plan showing the proposed use shall.
Oh, you did it. It's proposal what, to drop the word recommended.
That's what I'm saying.
Drop the whole phrase. Drop the whole phrase. It's a plan showing the proposed use shall.
He wants to change the key to the show.
Why don't you write it down and tell us what you want? That's probably going to be a debate up here, and that's not required.
If you use the sentence, the internal recommendation, and words saying shall be submitted.
A concept.
A concept plan showing, showing the proposal, a concept plan showing the proposed use shall be submitted. Correct? Got it?
Right. I think I've already.
A concept plan showing the proposed use shall be submitted to the planning board. Start with the word, make it capital A. That's it? That's it? Okay. So while you're, you're writing, or minister, please write with that.
I believe we went to recommended on the opinion of council, because we couldn't demand that, that we want recommended based on attorney, on attorney guard's feedback.
No, I hadn't said that. Perhaps there was a... Mr. Moderator? All right. Just so we understand here, what's happening in the bylaw, so there, the bylaw requires that a dispensary get a special permit. This is before the special permit, this section that's written says it's recommended that a concept plan showing the proposed use be submitted to the planning board prior to filing of a special permit about the planning review. So proposed change would make that concept plan mandatory rather than a recommendation. I, I know it's a legal matter, don't see a problem with that.
What's your name, sir? Bob Martin. Bob Martin. Ready to live?
54 Longwood Drive.
Okay. Is it Robert?
Maybe the brother.
Robert.
Robert and I are.
Your mother's a guy, Robert. Okay. Hold on a second. Mr. Burton?
Not much between 12,000 and 100,000. It might be simpler if we just change the word, it is recommended to, it is required.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that, the consistency, but the rest of the articles, I believe should be shallow.
Well, you made a suggestion, he didn't accept it, so we're going to state it, one amendment and second. Again, to the capital A, concept plan. Okay? Any more discussion on his amendment, not all of it? All right. See no one else raising their hand to put a vote on that? On the amendment, as stated, starting with the word capital A, concept, using the word shall, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Pass Janamis, like the amendment. Okay. Back to the article. Anything else on the article? Kathy says we need to move. Article 27, all those in favor, please say that by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass Janamis. Article 28, agriculture. We are in agricultural town. And we have the same issue here, gentlemen. You're going to make it, and I need to have a small amendment, take that up second. Read the article first. Introduce yourself, Mr. Middel.
Doug Middel, 89 Cross Road, also member of the Agricultural Commission. I move to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new Section 31 entitled the right to farm.
As printed in the law.
As.
Thank you very much. There is second, sir?
Second.
Select one, your recommendation?
Well, it's likely recommends approval.
Thank you. Finance?
I'd like to see the presentation, but we don't believe there's financial impact.
All righty. Mr. Mendoza, I think was going to make the amendment. Some minor word change. Mendoza?
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Mendoza, 160 Lancaster. In the care of the Agricultural Commission, H and, and a couple of, I forgot what you meant. I move that we amend Article 28 by making the following changes. It's in the, it's in everyone's form. Number one, in Section 3, line 2, we would like to remove the word of and replace it with the word on, concerning quality. Uh, Section 3, line 6, we would like to remove the words exclusively and commercial. Number three, Section 4, line 2, after the word uses, we would like to add the words and practices. And the final one, in Section 4, line 8, we would like to remove the word duct and replace it with the word dust.
All right. That's your amendment, is amendment second. Okay? Now the amendment in this order, should we get on that? Attorney part? You got it? Okay. Tell us about the amendment's first. Why are you changing these words?
We recently, our chairman recently resigned, as many of you may know. And unfortunately, the draft of the bylaw that was approved by the Agricultural Commission was not the one that was submitted to the warrant. These changes reflect what was actually voted on and approved by the Agricultural Commission. And the only one that really is important as far as the spirit of the bylaw is the second change, removing exclusively and commercial, so that the bylaw will apply to all residents of the town, and not just those that are classified as commercial farms. We want to protect agricultural endeavors, backyard farming, things like that, and, and also, I guess reminding you that in this case, the right to farm, by law right to farm, the word farm is used as, or, this is to protect farm, and it doesn't actually give anyone any rights to having a farm in a particular place, that's handled separately by, by farming. So, those are the changes we would like to make.
Okay. So, anybody have any questions about the amendment? Remember, are you raising your hand over there?
No, you're dealing, Sunny Hall Road. I think I'm clear in your explanation about the change that you wanted to remove the commercial part. Could you state that again, please?
Well, the way that, the way that the, that the bylaw was written, that this bylaw will protect farming practices only for commercial farms that are classified as commercial farms by the town. And the intent of the bylaw, the spirit of the bylaw is to protect agricultural endeavors that any citizen wants to make in their, on their own property, whether it's gardening or whether it's, a lot of people now, there's a lot of chickens and things like that, that people are starting to have. And we feel that it's very important for both the future, a big picture of food security, that people are able to produce food for themselves that they're not intending to sell, and also to, to protect, you know, the rights of anybody to do, you know, to provide for their own families to do farming activities on their own property. And with exclusively and commercial in the bylaw, it, we at the Agricultural Commission felt that it only protected working, commercial farms, and there's a lot of people that want to do a lot of agriculture just for themselves, for the families, and we want to protect them as well.
Okay. So there are a lot of very small properties in Lunenburg. We, you know, we also have a lot of large properties, but we have us kind of very close to our neighbors. So you're suggesting that this would, that then a complaint between neighbor and neighbor would be adjudicated under this town bylaw? Is that right?
Well, it would depend on. All right. Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I believe this is explained in Section 3 already, the last sentence. Moreover, nothing in this land farm bylaw shall be deemed as requiring any interest in land or as imposing any land use regulation, which is properly the subject of state statute regulation or local zoning law. So they're not, as a citizen, you're not gaining any extra rights for to protect a non-hereditary. And also, right, our bylaw in conjunction with the AgCom, we can bring these disputes between neighbors that you suggest to a local platform rather than bringing it to the state.
Thank you. Do you have something to say about the article?
Yes, I've got a very short presentation. Just a few slides. Should we go on to the first?
We welcome.
All right. As you all know, when you come into Lunenburg, there's a, there's a very large presentation of agriculture. We're very lucky to have two active dairies in town, Silt, one of which is a full sit, and another retail. They have their own bottling facility, and that's, that's very uncommon. I was just actually out in Montague, talking with an equipment dealer, and they're, they're losing a farmer per week. It's, uh, very, very. There's other large-scale producers in town. We have cut around Christmas trees, and fruit growers and produce. Um, this, we do have a lot of surrounding towns. We have Sterling. So all of these next few towns have right to farm bylaws already in place, as well as agricultural commissions. Lancaster, Plussminster, Princeton, Ashby, Townsend, several, Robben, and Arden. Going from there, like, we already touched upon this, the right to farm bylaw is not creating any new rights. It only protects the ones we already have. Also, aside from large scale, what this does is it, is it protects backyard farms, people that are raising their own vegetables, maybe they have chickens to raise their own eggs. And this also helps educate their children and gives them an understanding. it on eggs, and, and this also helps educate their children, and, um, gives them an understanding that food does not come from the root. As you can see, our founding fathers, by our town seal, Lunenburg's been based on agriculture from the beginning.
Thank you. So we have an amendment, those changes to the words, most important, the biggest one was deleting the word exclusively and deleting the word merger. That's an amendment. Do you want to speak on the amendment or the article?
I just have a question.
Okay, well, I think that's probably on the article, then, right?
Yeah.
So let's talk about the amendment.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions about the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment as they read it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Amendment's carried. Now we're back into the article. If you wanted to speak now about the article, if you're still listening. Do you want to speak about the article?
I don't.
Oh! Anybody got any questions about the article? Do you want to speak about the article? Oh, for the last one. Thank you. Okay, if she can't read it, she'll come by. Okay, all those in favor of this article?
Hi, I'm sorry to take people's time, I know you want to get out of here, but my question is, is there, is this, um, does this have anything, is there a problem that exists that, that this is, is designed to address, or are we, are we just supporting our neighbors here? Can, is there any, there's no power in this bylaw, really? Is there? Okay. If you could answer that question.
This is the question.
However, being a right to farm community does open opportunities for farmers, correct?
Yes, there are, there are other opportunities. Uh, one being if, uh, a farmer would like to sell his development rights to government to, to protect his, his farmer. Um, as, as of right now, the way it goes, if he proposes to do this, the federal government can fund eighty percent of the purchase, and the town government would fund twenty. Having the Agricultural Commission gets us a five percent discount, and having a right to farm gets us another five. So we change it to ninety percent federal, ten percent town.
Thank you, that's how I was thinking.
That's one that will help out.
Anybody else? Think we're ready to vote? All those in favor of Article twenty-eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Farming community stuff, please do. Article twenty-seven, I would love to take, ask a question about an article that has already been passed, that's important, the county council's question.
I have a question. Joe, what I'm looking for, just some clarity, the intent when we vote towards the eighteen by law two was to open up a dialogue with somebody that wanted to bring the power, just to have a conversation about the construction. It is something that we don't have in any of our other government issues. So my question is, is now mine, is there a requirement, to me, in my aspect of thinking, putting an additional word in the process on the developer, and required for that, for long-term purpose, or just putting to establish a dialogue, or something that could just come in, or that's really, uh, a continuous plan, and you would need to... So, I don't even know, it seems like it's forcing a traditional step on the developer, and we're trying to promote the government, and while we're trying also to put on a conversation for forty years, so, that was kind of the question. So, by not having a relative, if any other, if any of this applies, if any other thing is sent, I'll be going up on that.
So, Toby, if I understood the question, it sounded like it was twofold, but the latter part of it is, are you concerned that, particularly with respect to regulating, just in a non-his way, you're opening yourself up to some kind of legal challenge for proposing that additional burden? Or the other, such, primarily because the nature of the exchange you'd be having here would be a sort of voluntary, or a, just a good change of ideas, or this is not, they're informal, which is, I mean, you're not, I don't want to say yes or no, you're giving informal feedback in response. So it's not a, it's not a process that leads to a legally binding result. So I wouldn't say no. And the other part of your question, it is, it, um, changes the feel, it's actually an act of, you know, voluntary, and you're correct about that, not a hard, but I think if you're, you're, usually if you're saying in a formal fashion, you would have, uh, to affect that.
I think that's a good point of order. Article twenty-nine, Mrs. George Trump.
I hope the town will pass over Article twenty-nine.
Second, there is a second. Second. Leffler, what's your recommendation? Ben Con, your recommendation?
Leffler's horrible.
All right. Why are we passing it over, Mr. Bertrand?
Plans are not ready for acceptance.
All those in favor of passing over Article twenty-nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Passed unanimously. We have a petition by Mrs. Williams, Article thirty. I should make it away to the microphone, I shouldn't have said this when there were two hundred people drunk, but we want to encourage people, citizens, to write their own petition, come to town, call, talk to Carrie. Why not?
Unless my information is incorrect at this point, uh, one of our board of selection will be leaving the board coming, uh, election day next weekend. And, uh, I believe it's appropriate, um, the incorrect matters, it's mapping for all the services of the town, of the many years even involved.
I'll second it.
My name is Tom. My name is Tom Williams, I live at three twenty-one Street in Lunenburg. Um, I ask... I, I know the town, I hear you sit down. Ooh. I like his vision.
That's the microphone, right next to the microphone, there you go.
I hope the town won't accept the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve, relative to the sale of livers, lickers, and cordial spike on the beginning.
Great. Is there a second? Second. Leffler, what's your recommendation?
We're gonna wait for the presentation.
All right, Ben Con, do you have a recommendation?
We'd like to see the presentation.
All right. Tell us why we should do this, Mrs. Williams. What are we talking about? Why should we do this?
Well, um, I didn't hear a huge, um, piece of presentation, like, you know, I, this is my very first, uh, restaurant business, and I think the community needed it, and to compete in this, in this restaurant business, I feel like, uh, our guests that come in requesting, and I want to come in basically, apply to their request, and, as well as to be able to compete in this economy with the restaurant. It's basically for, I'm not a alcoholic, so it's a very, uh, it's, uh, cordial occurrence. Um, I, I, I feel like, um, we don't, we have a lot of, uh, different varieties of things that we can offer here, so therefore I wanted to do something different and offer to the community as well, other than just, um, wanting and wanting.
So, you have a restaurant, right?
Yes.
Okay. You have a restaurant?
I have a restaurant, Cabal Lish, on one sixty-five Nass Avenue. It's a Mediterranean, Spanish, and Indian fusion.
You want to be able to sell the currency, question is that, your...
That is correct.
Any questions about this? Board of selection, your recommendation?
Board of selection recommends unanimously.
There you go. Ben Con, any recommendations?
Uh, we should note where my name is going back.
Okay. Anybody want to ask any questions? Nope. Kathy says no. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of this last article, Article thirty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone close? Nope. Passed unanimously. We are dissolved, and we'll read the last article.